Everybody, I am Mary Sullivan, City of Darien Alderperson for Ward 5. I serve as the Chairperson for the Administrative Finance Committee, and I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Administrative Finance Committee as a whole to discuss the budget of fiscal year 2023. With all the city alderpersons present, our mayor, city treasurer, and clerk, city administrator, we also have our Dan Gombek and Chris Throm from the Municipal Services Team, and as well as our clerk, Organo. We will review, discuss, and conduct Q and A and come to a consensus on the fiscal year 23 budget. The document you have all received is a collaborative effort with Mayor Marches, City Administrator Vanna, Treasurer Corin, and city staff. I will serve as your facilitator. Tonight is the first in a series of meetings with the end goal being to have a public hearing on the budget for fiscal year 23 at the City Council meeting for vote of approval on Monday, April 4. My goal is to complete this review in two meetings if possible, and we will attempt to conclude our meeting tonight by no later than 9:30. We will take a few breaks along the way, and if any time someone needs a break, just please bring that to my attention. The next committee as a whole meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, March 1st, at 6:30 PM in council chambers. And then it will be the subsequent Tuesdays if we need additional meetings, and those are scheduled and published on the city calendar. Tonight, we will begin with the department expenditures, starting in order of City Council, Administrative, Community Development, Municipal Services, and Capital Projects. That's our lofty goal. Ideally, we will get through all of these. If time allows, we will then cover water funds and motor fuel tax. The Police Department will be covered at our second meeting next week, March 1st. Many of the items in this year's budget were discussed and hashed out in our goal-setting session last fall. All City Council members received copies of this budget, along with summary pages and supporting documents. All of this information has been published on the City of Darien website. These meetings are being broadcast on DCTV Channel 6 and available for viewing on the Darien website and YouTube channel. So without any further ado, we'll get things underway. Mayor Marches, do you have anything to add at this time?
No, I think you gave an excellent introduction, and we're looking forward to getting through those areas tonight, and hopefully we do approve this so that we could get this budget approved in April.
Great. Treasurer Corin, do you have anything to add this evening?
Not at this time.
Okay. And Administrator Vanna?
Just one reminder, as the council's going through the budget, there's some of the numbers in here are from hard bids, like truck numbers and things, but a lot of these other numbers, especially the revenues, are estimates that we've made and are probably a month old already. So as staff goes through the next few weeks or so, and I look at the revenues, we'll make adjustments to those and revisions. Most things are pretty close, usually when we estimate, but so a lot of the numbers you see here are reasonably close, but they won't be exact because, again, we have to estimate for like four months of revenue, and we use historical data on that, but so they'll be pretty close.
Okay. Thank you so much. This is a public meeting at this point. We don't have any public in the audience, but if we do, we'll bring that to our viewing attention and see if they have any comments, or if there is a podium set up, if they want to come to the podium and ask a question. Okay. Without further ado, we'll get started with the General Fund Summary, which is page number one. So reviewing the summary page, we have fiscal year 23 budget request, a revenue of $15,406,568. Department expenditures totaling $14,458,513. And fiscal year balance, $948,055. Beginning fund balance, $6,228,750. Ending fund balance, $7,176,805, with a transfer to capital of $3.4 million, with an ending fund balance of $3,776,805. Any discussion on the General Fund Summary? Brian?
Yeah, just to point out, the budget year we're in now that's ending May of '22 has revenues in there from a year ago, and it was very hard this time to predict and estimate revenues with COVID. So many things were changing. We were very conservative. When we did the budget last year, as you could see, the estimated actual revenue far exceeds what we budgeted. That's obviously a good thing for us, and that will all carry forward. The total expenses, again, are significantly lower than the approved budget, which gives us that strong fund balance at the end of '22. And again, any balances left over, they do get worked into the next year's budget. So that fund balance becomes a number that would go into the fiscal year 23 budget request, and when all those numbers are said and done and calculated, again, that fund balance of $3.7 million is about what we shoot for for a three-month reserve, give or take. That's a few bucks on the high side, but we try to stay about $3.5 million in the general fund.
Any questions for Brian on that? A lot of this he did also highlight in the memorandum that was issued with the budget packet dated February 11th. Okay. On page two and three, then you get the breakdown by account of the various areas.
Mary?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite sure when the right time would be to interject on this, but probably based on this first summary page.
Yes.
What I'd like to look at and call the council's attention to, I know everyone knows about it, and we've actually been pretty fortunate, knock on wood, I hate to say, or fortunate because of COVID, but if you recall, a couple of years ago, we stopped all our capital projects because we weren't sure what was going to be coming in revenue-wise, so we had a one-year delay on that. We also received $1.4 million this current fiscal year, and we're receiving another $1.4 million next fiscal year from the federal government as a result of all these programs that they've had. So essentially, it's bought us two years' worth of time, the one year that we delayed and the $2.8 million that we're receiving from the feds. If you do notice, though, over the course of the three years, what you're saying in terms of revenue on the current year, Mary, is correct, but if you look at the amount that we're transferring to the general, to the Capital Improvement Fund for the current year, we're projecting about $3.4 million. Next year, it would go to $1.2 million, again, assuming all the numbers hold out. In the third year of the budget, though, it's only $500,000. And I'm going to jump ahead, I'm not going to ask you to do this, but I'll just, I think you'll understand as I say that, even with those funds being transferred, currently we're projecting the Capital Projects Fund estimating that the balance in the Capital Projects Fund at the end of the current fiscal year will be approximately $10 million. But continuing on with all our normal programs that everybody seems to like and agree on in terms of the streets and the sidewalks and everything else that we do, our basic infrastructure, that runs about $3.4 million a year. And if you get to the end of the third year in this budget that we're looking at, the fund balance drops from the current amount from $10 million to about $3.4 million. What does that tell me and would that tell you? That tells you that at the end of the third fiscal year, we have enough in the fund balance to go one more year out. So again, assuming all these numbers in here are gospel, we'd have enough to do what we do for four years. However, that next year, our Capital Projects Fund usually runs about $3.5 million in all those ordinary projects. So in that fifth year, we have zero fund balance left, and at that point, we would have to look for either more revenues or cutting back on projects. So as we're looking at these things, as we do find savings, if you can come up with any savings, it's only going to help push that farther out. But again, if you look at the big picture right now, this current fiscal year is looking outstanding, but as you do get three years out, you realize that at the end of that third year, you've got enough, assuming these numbers hold out enough, to do things for one more year after that, and then some decisions have to be made.
Thank you, Mike, for pointing that out, and that is very valid to see. That's why we, in the budgeting process, and that's why the staff and Administrator Vanna always provides us with the 24 and 25 so that we can obviously plan for next year, but also keep in mind, decisions we make today also impact things down the road.
Right, because I know we tend to focus on, which is rightfully so, we focus on the current year, but again, as the big picture, it's important for people to keep that in the back of their minds as we're looking at all of this.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, don't be sorry. Any other questions on that? Yes, Mr. Klistick?
One quick question. We had a long-term road and ditch program that I think ended last year that we consistently spent around a million, million and a half, so that's sort of gone away, right? So that sort of saves us a million, million and a half that we don't use anymore.
But if you look at, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mike. If you look at the numbers, Brian's already factored that in. The current year, we do have quite a few ditch programs finishing them off.
Okay.
But then, as you look into the three years, those numbers have been deleted from that at that point, so it's not like we magically have another million dollars to go into it at that point, again, if you've looked at the numbers across the few years.
And as we get into the Capital Projects Fund, Dan will go over those, all those in conjunction with the roads.
Yeah. For example, I'm just looking at the Capital Projects Fund. For the current fiscal year, we're looking at $1.8 million, which is more than we usually spend, but again, piggybacking it with the roads, it finalizes it, but that's for the current year. In the next two years in the budget, there's zero reflected in terms of expenses for that, so the $3.5 million does not even include the ditch projects at that point. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Yes. Alderman Gustafson?
The sales tax, why are we showing such a big decrease from 2022 to 2023, $6.3 million to $5.8?
That is, you know, the 6.2 is our best estimate now. Like I said, we still have a few months left, and my practice has always been budget conservatively on the revenues. If should those revenues come in higher, again, like this current year we're in, those would get, be available for transfer into the Capital Projects Fund.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
I would think that's going to go up substantially in '23.
I tend to agree with Brian's number. I'd rather be a little more conservative and maybe to address your.
Be too conservative and then have to cut a bunch of stuff just because that number on top is light.
Well, let me give you, for example, why that number could be higher, because if you notice, prior to COVID, it was $5.3 million. We budgeted only $4.9, and we're projecting $6.2, but Brian is projecting $5.8, so he's projecting a cutback of $400,000. Well, the last two years, if you recall, people got a lot of checks in the mail from the government, I mean, all those $1,400, all those $1,600, and everybody was saying, everybody's spending that money, retail and everything. This current year, if you look at what economists are saying, they're saying people have sort of bought everything for their houses, now they want to get out again, and they're more likely to go on vacations and spend it more in the service sector as opposed to the retail sector, so that in my mind would justify a reduction. I hope you're right. I hope the number does come in higher, but I cannot see justification for raising it beyond what the number is this year based on all the money people.
Yeah, I would at least raise it up to this year's. You know, I think, Brian, you'll get a little better idea on that in the next three weeks or so.
Yeah, I mean, we'll get one more month in to compare to last year. I might have that month in already, I don't know from the documents I'm looking at, but as Mike said, I'm more comfortable with that number. And then going out in years '24 and '25, I factored in a bit of an increase for those years. There's nothing worse than overestimating revenues for budgeting. And, you know, again, we try to get on the spot, we try to be very reasonable, but we do err on the conservative side.
What about down in court fines? I see there's a drop there, too. In no way, I think we now have a dedicated code enforcement person, don't we? So why would the fines go down when they go up? I got a full, I think I've got that person going to be here a full year now this year.
Well, those are mostly police fines. We don't.
Those are?
Yeah, we have not issued many fines from code enforcement. We try to work that out with residents, that's a small part, but even that is up this year from the budget amount and.
But it's at 2021 level, though, too. It's right back up to that level, because the budget was low in '22.
Yeah, that is one that has been more difficult to estimate really because of COVID. At certain point, things slow down, and this particular year now, there's just been a lot of enforcement from the Police Department, and the tickets have gone up.
The other thing I've heard, Brian, and maybe you've heard this, too, is that a lot of the courts were closed during COVID. They were shut down for two and three months, so people's cases were getting postponed, and then once they freed it up and heard them, now you had, again, probably more than one year's worth of collections in that one-year time period.
Any other questions on that? Brian?
Yeah, just to highlight a couple of the revenues, and Eric just brought up sales tax, which, again, this year for the City of Darien is a fabulous number in sales tax. We're really glad to have that. It shows good things in our business community. The first item is real estate taxes. As has been for now since 2009, I believe, the city has not raised the annual property tax. So whatever the county gave us last year, that's exactly what we ask for next year. Now, if you see that first line in years two and three, it does go up a little bit, but there's a corresponding property tax in the Capital Projects Fund that drops by that same amount. So really, those numbers need to be looked in totality.
Is that tied to the bond payment that's being?
Yeah, there's a bond payment in the Capital Projects Fund that we have, I believe it's a partial payment this year, and then that goes away. So we'll still have that revenue available, though, through the tax levy, and it'd just be geared to the general fund. Those are really the two ones I did want to mention.
Joe, do you want to say anything about the LRF money?
The LGD?
Yes.
Yeah, we've been working very hard at the state, lobbying our state legislators to pass a bill by Representative Anthony DeLuca and Senator Laura Murphy, which would raise the LGDF to 8%. The municipalities have always received 10% of all the state income tax our residents paid to the state up until 2011, and at that point, that number had dropped, where it's currently at 6.06. Last year, we fought a battle, we lobbied yours truly, made a lot of phone calls, and we were able to, the governor wanted to reduce it by 10%, and we were able to keep it at 6.6%. This year, we've made a concerted effort, there's been editorials in the paper, I did a press conference last week in order to get it up to 8%. If we get it up to 8%, that would mean an additional $500,000 to the City of Darien. You currently get $2.5 million in LGDF money. If you multiply that by 20%, you're going to get another $500,000, and that money is used primarily for public safety and for infrastructure improvement. That's where that money goes. We had a conference today, we're still working with Representative DeLuca and Senator Murphy, and Speaker of the House Welch is supportive of the bill. We currently have 50 members of the House of Representatives in the state who support the bill. We have 39 senators who support the bill, and Welch is meeting with the governor, and it's our hope that the governor agrees through the budgetary process to do an automatic appropriation, so every year we start getting 8%, and eventually then we get up to 10% after then. So we're looking forward to that. If it doesn't go through this year, it'd be a great disappointment to us, but, you know, the governor, it's something the governor has to decide on, and it's an election year, and the governor seems to think municipalities are wealthy the way they are, that they don't need additional help, and that's not exactly the case in all municipalities. While Darien's sales tax revenue may be high, we may be doing well financially, not all municipalities are doing as well as we are. And so we really, we're all fighting the battle, and this is not just DuPage County, this is mirrors throughout the state of Illinois, all the different councils of government, we're all putting pressure on the state legislature to get this bill by Representative DeLuca passed.
Okay. Thank you for that. No, 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 it's, I think it's just important because it's, as we talk about revenue, like things that could potentially get better versus, you know, but there's no guarantee. Yes?
I'm sorry, Eric, I just wanted to make sure I understood your question. You said, you're talking about the revenues you'd rather, you know, not underestimate, and you talked about, you know, in order to cut things. I'm not, could you just clarify that so I'm clear on that?
No, I just wanted to make sure we've got a good revenue number to start with. That's all.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Okay. Any more questions on the items on page two and then on page three for the General Fund Revenue Budget Fiscal Year 23?
Page three, the rents are going down? Isn't it pretty much, what are those rents for?
The tower rents, you know, we have antennas on our towers, we do have included in that, it was a catch-up payment from one of the companies that, this is the last year that will happen, so after May, that drops off.
Any thought ever of putting advertisement up on top of the water towers?
I have not thought about that.
Okay.
Any other questions on revenues? Okay. Well, if we're ready, then we will move on to the City of Darien City Council Budget, page four. What we'll do is we'll, you know, obviously, if you want to, like, look at the summary page on four, but then we'll go in, I mean, the overview page on four, but then we'll start going by account numbers and overview on page five and six for this budget. And what I was figuring we would do is kind of hone in on the City Council discretionary expenditures, unless somebody feels necessary to bring up a specific light item, we'll just kind of move through it quicker that way. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. So going down to operating, account 12-4205, we've got $500 for boards and commissions. Then the next one is the cable operations, account 12-4206, $6,000. Just raise your hand or, you know, say, give a little cough if you think we need to stop. Dues and subscriptions, $26,440. Moving on to public relations on page six, 12-4239, $1,300. Training and education, $1,000. Trolley contracts, $6-
Anything specific to $1,000? Is that just a general kind of training budget?
What, what the council has done previously, they put $1,000 in, and there's available 150, I believe, $100 per elected official, should they come across any training session. And so if there's a seminar that one of the elected officials wants to go to, we could sign that up and pay for that up to $100.
I know that's how we got covered, our new training one, when we became elected. Did you have something, Joanne?
No, I just wanted to say that I'm one of the few that uses it because I go to monthly meetings.
Good for you.
Okay. Well, let's remind ourselves that it's there to be used, gentlemen and lady. Okay. Going down to trolley contracts, any questions on any of these?
What was the code supplements? What's that, refresh my memory, what's that for, the 3,000?
When the city council passes ordinances, change, changes ordinance, we have a company, it used to be Sterling Codifiers, I-
MuniWeb, is it?
MuniWeb. No, MuniWeb's the-
That's the website, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a company that maintains the updated codes on the website. So if you go to the City of Darien website and you want to look at the city codes, you go to that site.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, we'll move on, but the total of maintenance for city council is $50,071 discretionary, $35,840. We'll move on then from, if I have a consensus from the city council budget, on to administrative department budget, page seven. Okay. We have the overview page, and then we'll hop into page eight, which is the summary, and we'll, yes?
In terms of the overview page, I have a question. It's more related to Brian, and this is going to affect several of the other accounts that we're going through. I noticed the IMRF, if you notice, the contribution had been running about $40, $46,000, projecting forward, drops to $37,000. I'm going to give you my assumed answer. I know the IMRF, they're, they invest, make indifferent investments also. They're also on a December 31 year-end, and they reter, redetermine the rate every year of contribution that we have to make on behalf of our different employees. This is the administration, administrative fund. You'll see that same concept running through the other funds as we move forward. So Brian, I'm assuming that they dropped our rate for next year, which is what triggered the reduction in the IMRF contribution going forward?
Yeah, and that's on a calendar year. So it's a little bit of estimating next calendar year, but basically, for all the benefit information, Julie, our accounting manager, has all the salaries on a spreadsheet, and these are calculated, and we do double-check those because they're, like, on social security, there are some employees that might max out, and we don't pay over a certain rate, but those are all factored in.
I did check those, but the IMRF, I know they redetermine that rate every year. So I assume, since the market was so good in '21, that's the reason for the decrease in it.
Right, okay.
Any questions on that for Mike or Brian? Okay. Anything else? Treasurer Corn?
No.
Okay. So then we'll jump into page eight, and we'll do the same kind of methodology that we did from the council budget. And we'll just kind of hone in, unless there's something you want to raise a question about. We'll hone in on the discretionary expenditures. So we'll hop into dues and subscriptions, 10-4213 for $1,615. Okay. Then over to page nine.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
Just, I did want to point out, under liability insurance, 4219, we have an expense in the general fund and the water fund, and that's for our property and casualty insurance. So that covers all of our workers' comp claims, it covers professional liability, you know, all of the claims we may receive, and we're part of the intergovernmental risk management agency known as Irma, and it's a municipal pool of probably 65 governmental entities now, and it's been around a long time. And, you know, it's, you can either get regular conventional insurance or really this intergovernmental pool, and it's a great pool to be part of. And also, we do have, we've had a good year this year, and what they do is they look at past history as part of your premium, and this year, we probably saved $100,000 in that premium due to good loss years over the last five years. So that's always good to see. And they also keep a reserve balance in there, and we have the ability to use that and draw that down. But as Treasurer Corn points out every year, they earn better interest than we do. So that, that money is an asset, but sitting there for now.
Good to share.
It's important for everybody to realize, you know, the protections that the city elected officials have in doing your jobs and the staff. So I did want to point that out.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian on that? Yes, Tom Clistick?
On public relations, is this the social media? So it's, sorry, that was page seven.
Okay.
Line item said operating cost, $50,498.
We can, if you want to jump to page nine, where it breaks it down, 10-4235, printing and forms, and then you've got 10-4239, public relations, where it shows citizen of the year, monthly retainer for communications, newsletter, special events.
Gotcha.
Totally. Towing $83,700.
I just have one quick question on that, and it's regarding the three events with bands. Have we looked into anything like that? I know with Rotary of Dallas Grove doing their Grove Fest, bands have, you know, that weren't, you know, were gone or whatever else last year, that couldn't do, do much, they're already, they're already, you know, way booked in advance. Do we know where we're at with that?
We hit, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we've had two meetings, one with the park district board, executive board, and one with the Chamber of Commerce. And we've made arrangements with both to interspace concerts within their schedules. The Chamber of Commerce, we're looking to have the Chamber of Commerce actually operate those three concert dates and the management. And what they're, what they've agreed to do is to schedule those dates in conjunction with other activities. So for instance, one might be an Oktoberfest in the fall. So you would not just have the band, but you would also have food and other types of entertainment there. One would be in the summer, one might be in the spring this year, but those would be run, according to our discussions with the chamber, each one would have a theme. And we've been assured by April that we will have bands. She's, she's really good at negotiating bands.
Okay, that's a question I wanted, I just know, do we have bands lined up?
We're not, we're not going to get, you know, the Beatles revival band, you know.
No, I get it.
We're going to, we're going to get quality music for, within the price range. But we've made the arrangements with them. Instead of Brian and I, or having a, a group of the city council do it, we're going to have the chamber do it so that they're going to make those arrangements for those three different concerts.
All right, I understand. I just understand that. I know that it, this is February, and a lot of those bands are already kind of booked up, you know, for the year, and I just want to make sure that we, we have them before we go ahead and budget the money, that's all.
Well, because the council has approved this the last two years, and we haven't done it due to COVID, I think Mayor and I, pending tonight's discussion, will sit down again with the park, just, I'm sorry, with the chamber, because our discussion was a bit preliminary, there's a lot of details to work out, but I agree, that's a good way to go.
Okay. You mean monthly retainer, like, what is that? Does this for social media, monthly retainer?
The monthly retainers are your direct connect and everything else she does through social media.
That's the annual cost, obviously, the 36. It says monthly, but I'm sorry.
Newsletter is something we're adding.
Darien Connect, right, yeah. Or-
We have an issue of that newsletter going out probably in April.
Probably in early April, we're working on that.
The printed newsletter that'll be mailed to every household.
Everybody will get a newsletter, and it'll cover things that, it'll, it'll cover things such as the budget. Well, I mean, we have a number of items that'll be, that'll be a mayor's message, but there'll be issues that'll be pertinent for residents. We really wanted to make sure that all residents were getting information. Not everybody looks at Direct Connect or gets the Direct Connect, so we thought the newsletter was a good way of getting that information.
We do have things in there, too, like the brush pickup, because that, you know, will start soon, and we wanted to get that out. So there's not a lot of the services that will be in this one yet, but again, we're putting all our phone numbers, encouraging, encouraging people to call, should they have questions and they're not on the, in the internet or email.
I was just going to say, do we have someone separate, or is it all through the chamber that does everything?
Chamber does nothing.
Chamber does nothing with the newsletter?
We, we hired Metro Strategies-
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
A couple of years ago.
Yeah, so they're still on, okay.
And they changed, and now we have an employee, just a, a single person doing that for us who was recommended by Metro Strategies. So again, it's, it's the weekly Direct Connect, it's all our postings on all our social media, it's coordinating responses to those things.
Yes, Lester?
Have we got any metrics? Are we going to get metrics this year for, to see if there was, like, an increase in traffic on the Darien Direct Connect, or see if there's any improvement in our communication from residents? Like, are we going to get some metrics?
We, we did get that when we had the agreement with Metro Strategies, and that was a couple thousand more a month, I believe. And when we have this contract with MORA, those metrics were not part of that. But I could, I could certainly talk to her about, you know, you know, looking at some of those things. I don't know, you know, each, each thing probably has their own metric, you know. We can, we could very easily, like, we'll know how many people are on Direct Connect and some of those more basic things, but I'm not sure of all the other metrics.
That's what I mean. I mean, I know Direct Connect was one of the major concerns of people not signing up. And I just wanted to see if there was, like, an increase in, you know, signups or something like that.
Oh, yeah, that, that's been an increase. And the staff upstairs did a great job during this transition with the garbage company. We had a lot of people coming in who might not have been on Direct Connect. So upstairs, every time you hear, they sign somebody up, you hear the bell ring. So it's been going off pretty, pretty well.
Nice.
Just one other quick, quick thing on that. I don't think, and I asked this before to you, Brian, I don't think we can get, is find out how many people are actually watching Channel 6.
Yeah, that was not available.
Specific recording. Now, what about, and help me here, guys, what about on YouTube? Can you find out who actually watched?
I, I think you-
How many people actually watched then, the actual council meeting on YouTube?
Yeah, if you, if you were to put on YouTube now, it shows how many people are viewing it.
Yeah.
Like, last night, I had it on to make sure it was working right, and it was two. But, you know, that, whether or not that's typical-
Is that something you could provide to us, you know, each month, just how many people watched the council meeting?
Well, I'm not, I'm not as familiar with YouTube, but I could check.
Yeah.
To see if that's-
I did just be trying to find out if there are people watching or not, or, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I-
A lot of people watch it on YouTube because the quality on com, you know, Channel 6 has been pretty poor. So a lot of people go to YouTube.
Yeah, I will check, yeah.
You can definitely pull the stats off of YouTube to know how many people watched it live, and then after that, how many people viewed it.
Yeah, okay.
As, like, a, you know, re-recorded.
Yeah.
You could even, like, even if you clicked on it yourself, you can see that number. Mm-hmm. Any other questions on public relations? Yes, Tom, Belzak?
I just, I just want to clarify. So the plan right now is to spend $6,000 to the chamber to manage those three events?
No, the $6,000 would be devoted, would-
For all, to manage all three events.
Be their management cost.
Right.
In other words, you have to have porta potties, you have to have-
No, I, I'm just trying to make sure it's clear. We're, we're going to, the budget's going to give the chamber $6,000, and the chamber will be responsible for completely managing all three of those events.
Well-
I don't know if you're going to give them, you're going to reimburse them.
Well, that's what I mean.
It would really be the 15, we haven't, the 15, because there's the special events, like, for the bands and, and things like that, we have 9,000 in, in the amount of-
No, I understand. I'm, my point was, we budgeted 9,000 for bands, whether we do it or whether someone else does it, it's 9,000 for bands. The 6,000 is going to be to have them manage those three events. Would that be correct?
Correct.
Correct, but we have to work that detail out specifically.
I mean, I'm not against it, but I think I want to know what I'm getting for 6,000.
But isn't it, when we say management, isn't it just their costs, like you say, for porta potties? I'm not just paying the chamber just for their time, am I? Oh, okay.
You're paying their-
Reimburse their cost.
Yeah, they're going to have, you know, if someone is familiar with running Darien Fest, there's, there's additional cost to running a fest besides just the band, the entertainment, you know, the porta potties and all, and the marketing and all that other stuff.
They're out of pocket cost.
Where that money's going.
Okay, okay.
And I'm sure that we'll be working with them-
Come up with a budget.
To understand where that money is going. We'll, we'll build the accountability there for that.
Yeah, that, whatever formal agreement we come up with, we'll come back to the council for, for a resolution or a formal approval.
Great.
Any other questions on that area? Okay, moving on, training and education, $1,500. 10-4263. And travel and meetings, $500. If there's nothing more on page nine, we'll move to page 10. Going down to contractual services, 10-4325, consulting professional services. A discretionary fund of $19,200. Which ties back to LRS electronic recycling event that we discussed last night at city council.
Yeah, that was approved last night, so that's, is in the budget.
That's a non-issue or a non-point. Contingency, $10,000. Do you want to explain that?
That's yours, isn't it?
Well, that's in, Dan thinks it's his sometimes.
Isn't it?
Well, it might be.
I thought you were spending already.
You know, that's just for, you know, we have a 15, $16 million budget. We certainly did an account for everything, and, and things will come out through the year. I think in the past, Dan might have had, some of the banners around town were ripped. We had to get a replacement for more. So that's just unanticipated expenses that come up.
And then we have janitorial services for Miss Lane, Miss Lane is cleaning, $1,000. Going down to capital, equipment, $65,000. So that's to upgrade the chamber here, the council chamber?
Yes, we have, well, the 5,000 is typically, we do leave some for the cable room in case something goes. But when the draft budget was prepared, we did not have the backup that we actually got, received yesterday from, from the company that does or would do our sound work. They've done some things for us, they do work for a lot of municipalities. The owner is actually a sound and media person for another community. So yesterday, we just got a price, and it's a total of $63,500. So it's a little bit more than what we have in, in there. And what it would be, it'd be a certain amount of hardware that they would bid out for us and get the best price, and then the rest would be their labor for installation. So basically, what, what this would do, there's what's called a V-mix, and that's kind of the system management. It puts everything together, sound, the video, and that is estimated at about 8,000. We're looking at a wireless mic system, and we would get rid of these mics, and that's part of the, that's part of the improvement. We have the cable playback system that puts us on cable and all the cable messaging. That is also very old. So again, for the microphones, it's the wireless mics, it's mixers, and this will get us, you know, away from the hardwiring, away from the static, and this will be on the, the internet. So the only problem we would have ever is, is if the internet was down for a particular time. But this will improve the sound, it'll get rid of the machine behind you. And this is what we've been asking for, and the council's been asking for, for some time. And I think that's, it's a good project to do.
Any questions for Brian?
Anything over 5,000 does come back to the city council throughout the budget year. So what you're seeing here now, even if it's in kind of an abbreviated form, anything over the five will come back to the council in formal contract form or expenditure approval form.
Alderman Clistick?
You said you just got new numbers today. Are, are we going to be able to get an email for all of us to see what the, how long will it take for you to put together a backup for that?
Yeah, I have the backup, and, you know, I have paper copies I had today, but I, I would rather probably email.
Yeah, that's fine.
So everybody could-
So, so they're ready?
Yes, yes, we have that ready.
Alderman Clistick?
Could we ask, gentlemen, you mentioned the internet going down. It, it does happen. I've been on the Zoom calls and commerce calls, internet does go down. Is there a backup system? Can we use a phone as a hotspot? Is there a backup system they could have, we could ask them?
We are looking at, at a type of backup system where a camera might be in the back. That could, that could be used, probably, again, I don't know if that would be wireless, and then we might be able to broadcast that on YouTube, but that, we're still getting the details on. But he did mention that would be part of the project.
But if the internet did go down, they'd still be recording it so that it could be viewed, just not live.
Yes.
So the recording would still continue?
Yeah, we would, we would record the meetings.
Right. But there would be, like, a delay in viewing it because there's no, it couldn't be, it couldn't be uploaded or streamed into the internet?
Yeah, and, you know, when we, when we get the, the formal information to the council, we will double-check all that. This is just a technical area that we don't have expertise or knowledge in, but, and you can do whatever we want them to do in this day and age.
But this is the method that-
But this is the method that is like what makes sense for a municipality of our size to go, to go down, I guess, is the-
Yeah, this is, uh, the same that Glenn is the owner of the company, has been doing for a number of other communities.
Mm-hmm.
And again, fairly recently, he mentioned Lyle, um, and, and Wes, well, Westmont is, uh, the community he's at, but he's done this for a number of towns. And this is what he's recommending. And he's well aware of, of the problems we have. Uh, he's also the company now that, uh, we pay to run the camera system now than when we don't have the volunteers.
Any questions on, um, any of that? Any other items under the administrative department budget? Okay. So that shows us with a maintenance total of 1,273,300, a discretionary of 182,565. If there's no further discussion, we will move on from administrative department budget. All the backup was also provided for those items. And then we will start with community development department budget. Page 27. Yes, Treasure Corn?
Yeah, I have a question for Brian. I, I discussed this with him before, but I'm not sure whether we changed the number or whether we were talking about the same thing. Under the economic incentives, you'll see the estimated actual for the current year as being, uh, 359,000.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, going forward, 378. The 359 is a combination of Home Depot, which is 65, 68,000 dollars, and then the balance for Walmart, which last year was about 291,000 dollars, give or take. Uh, so the 559 that he's got there in the current year, I questioned him on it, and I believe that number's going to be higher when we get to the actual numbers. What the auditors do, they have us actual, do the actual computation because the incentive is based on their actual sales through April 30th. We obviously don't have those numbers. We get them once a year from the state, what the Walmart sales are. They have been increasing. And as Alderman Gustafson has said, sales tax seems to be going up. My guess is that number's going to be going up. So I think this number may be a little bit on the light side, maybe by 20 or 30,000 dollars when we get the actual numbers from where Walmart actually was. Uh, that's the actual dollar amount that we paid this, in cash in this last fiscal year.
Forgive me, where you, where you at?
Well, I'm sorry.
Page 27.
On page 27, about halfway down, there's a line called economic incentives. That's, uh, both Walmart and Home Depot are combined in that. The Home Depot is a fixed amount. Walmart depends on what their sales are.
359, I'm sorry, I heard the number 559 a year and that's why it was lost. Thank you.
Mike, I have us paying Walmart this year as an example. Uh, the incentive was, uh, 291,000.
Right, that's what we paid them like in May of this current fiscal year. And then we paid Home Depot the balance, 67 or 68. That's what makes up the 359. What I'm saying is that number for the current year is going to change because after April 30th, you're going to go to the state and you're going to say what were Walmart's sales taxes?
Yeah.
And let's say that comes up instead of 291 that it was last year, if it comes up to 320 or 330, that's what we're going to owe them. And that's what the auditors are actually going to record as the expense as of April 30th. Because the, the year end and what we owe them is fixed as of April 30th. So you're basing that on last year's number. My estimation is that number will probably increase somewhat in the current fiscal year.
Okay. And, and we do, we do come across these where budgeting doesn't exactly say what accounting does. So for me, budgeting what we paid this year, but I will, uh, look at that number with Mike a little more.
But again, based on even what Eric Gustafson said, uh, as sales go up and our sales tax goes up, I would anticipate that their sales went up and what we would owe them back would go up since we're on a, we have the base, but anything over that base goes back to them.
And that number, Mike, with, with auditors, it's a part of the year, correct?
No, it's all year. Because, because the incentive is based on May 1st to April 30th. So April 30th of 2022, you're going to go to the state like you always do.
Yeah.
And say, what were Walmart's sales? Uh, what were the sales taxes collected? You're going to compare that to our base and then that extra amount, last year was 291, that we paid them in May, which is what you have in here.
Yes.
So we will pay it this May, but the expense will actually be reflected as of April 30th. So that number will be higher as well as the next couple of years, I would assume. Again, if sales keep going up, that would go up a 20, 30,000 dollars a year.
As we're talking about these rebates, when does the Walmart and Home Depot rebates end? I know.
Home, Home Depot was a 10-year and I believe we're in about the fifth or sixth year in it. At the time we did the Walmart, I said that I will probably be dead long before it ends.
Oh, I know. It's going to get worse, it'd be my concern.
Well, it's, it's not, can never get worse. I mean, we, we've protected our base.
Oh, they can jack it up.
But what they insisted on in calculating the payment was we owed them $2 million and we owed the developer $2 million. So it was a total of $4 million. But they insisted, one, a part of the deal was that $4 million that we owed them accrued, basically accrued interest at approximately eight and a half percent. So at eight and a half percent interest on $4 million, essentially everything we've been paying them has all been going to interest. So the amount has not decreased. In fact, Walmart at the 291, they get the first 300,000. If it goes over 300,000, that's where the developer will start getting a contribution toward his $2 million. He has not received 10 cents at this point. So again, I think we'll all be long gone, but it was done for purposes of protect, protecting our biggest sales tax generator.
Home Depot the same, is that a 10-year or two?
They were a 10-year, yeah. There's this 10-year fix. There's no additional interest or anything and it's approximately 67 or 68,000 dollars. And I think we have four more years. Uh, I'm actually hoping they come back at us and the, what that tied into is they, their lease was expiring and they want to, they had two lease extensions, two five-year lease extensions. So they said we will exercise both five-year lease extensions for a total of 10 years, but they wanted 67 back from us for each of those years. So I'm hoping at the end of those 10 years, their lease will be up. So I'm hoping they do want to stay here because again, that's a, a nice revenue generator for the city.
And Dan, who owns that property between PetSmart and Walmart?
Between PetSmart and Walmart?
Deal Circuit, Deal Circuit City?
That, that's inland.
It's inland. So inland has the right to develop with that? Do they have to get Walmart approval? Or that's just inland?
There are some contingencies of what can go in there. Um, I'm, I don't have all the caveats to that.
Okay.
But yes, there are, you know, whether-
So that's inland.
A grocery store, for example, they may prohibit that.
Yeah, yeah, could it be direct competition?
So Home Depot's needs $67,000 incentive to stay in Darian?
It was 670 over 10 years.
Right, it was roughly 670,000 for them to stay for 10 years to exercise their-
Gotcha. Have we ever looked at a Menards or Lowe's? I know a lot of residents ask for something else. You know, I shop at Home Depot and their prices are pretty high compared to other places. So they sort of have a monopoly. So I'm just curious if we're giving them additional money for a monopoly. Got a Home Depot just down the street. So I don't think they're going to move. I mean, we'd love to have a Menards all day.
The answer to that is yes, because the reason Home Depot, there's two Home Depots, is number one, to keep Lowe's out of Woodridge for direct competition to Woodridge Home Depot. I'm sorry, no, Darian Home Depot. The Home Depot was also approached by Westmont and as well as Lowe's for Westmont to go in the, in a certain quadrant on 60th Street. That never materialized with Lowe's and Home Depot. That's when we had gotten wind of that information and that's when we started the negotiations with Home Depot, which took approximately two years.
Wow.
To put the deal together for them to stay.
As I recall, doesn't Home Depot produce, what is it, 550,000 in revenue?
I, I can't divulge the exact numbers.
We're not allowed, uh, as Mike said, per individual sales-
Okay.
Tax. There's just confidentiality, but obviously payments out are, is public information.
Gotcha.
And back to your question, Tom, you might like Menards. I may prefer Home Depot. I may, prices here are there, but unless you can guarantee me, you can get the Menards to come in there if we say, okay, forget it, Home Depot. Uh, it's a sizable number that you'd be giving up.
The Menards was contacted as a backup, if you want to say, and they were not interested for the simple reason that there were two strategic locations between Bullybrook and Hodgkins where it made no sense to, for them to put in an additional one.
Any other?
Yeah.
Yeah, on Bell Road. Any other questions on the economic development incentive money or rebate money? Okay. We'll go back down then. We'll, uh, I think we already said travel and meetings. Then we've got vehicle, gas and oil. None of those though, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not even look, looking then to the discretionary expenditures.
We have nothing on the whole thing.
Yeah. Okay. There's nothing else left under discretionary expenditures for the community development budget. Are there any more questions on any of the other line items after economic development?
Just one quick question. I know Eric mentioned about having some on, some budget for marketing for businesses for part-time. Was that budgeted in?
No, no, that was a, a position, that's that one I sent you, Brian.
Yes.
Regarding that retail business attraction and development specialist.
Yeah, I, I recall Eric had sent that on and in discussions with Dan, um, you know, we had determined and believe we don't need that position. If the city council wants to add that, that would be something the city council would have to do. Our feeling was that, um, you know, we're, we're working now on the zoning codes for the larger shopping centers. And all of those shopping centers have management firms and brokers that are already going out looking for businesses. So, um, we thought that would be redundant for us to use city money, uh, to pay for that because that's already being done.
Yeah, personally, you know, and I've had some talk, Dan's and Dan and I have some talks with some of these developers. I'm not real comfortable with some of the developers and how hard they're really working, to be honest with you.
You're saying developers, you mean brokers?
Yeah, like Mid-America. Okay, I mean, they talk a good game, but they haven't really done much. Okay, so I did, you know, and Dan and I are now working with them, trying to, you know, to get some things going in here. And that's what this, this position would do. And I pulled it from, you know, I wrote the job description. It was really based upon of what other communities have. And a lot of communities do have this type of position that really then get involved and work heavily with the brokers and stuff, work, go directly to businesses and attract those businesses and get it through the process and then work with the city and get any ordinance and stuff approved and that type of thing. I mean, it, it's just a, a, a position to help facilitate, since we're in such competition right now with Woodridge and Downers, okay, trying to get retail space and stuff. It's brutal out there. You know, you can see what Downers, how their improvements they've made to their center. Now we're in competition with them and they stole export away from us. So, you know, I'm sure they're looking to attract other businesses from Darian. So it's, it's, it was just, it would just be another tool. You know, that type of-
I'd be careful about saying that any municipality stole any business from us.
No.
Because that's, because if, 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 if I'm not mistaken, it sounded as if the, uh, the owner of export didn't find the services, uh, they were getting at their current location and that's why they moved. And that, that Downers Grove actually stole something.
Lower rent.
Yeah, so I'd be careful about how we say that.
So that, if you, if you offer lower rent, you stole the business away.
The reason I was supporting it is I worked, I had Shiba Sushi Jim in my ward and he moved to the middle of town. He felt like in Darian, there's, there's, you're part of the chamber or you're for not. And if you're not part of the chamber, you don't have that inside scoop, he calls it, to the city. And so, you know, he's an immigrant. He felt like intimidated, you know, coming forward, trying to get like, you know, I worked with Dan a little bit for Shiba to come in, Jim's the owner. And so he'd explained to me, like, he felt like if you're part of the chamber, you got the in-crowd, you have the influence of the city. If you're not part of the chamber, you don't have that and you're going to struggle a little bit. And so he was a little intimidated by it. So the reason I support, um, Eric here is if we have someone that proactively goes out, maybe they won't feel as intimidated. And I asked Jim, like, why don't you just join the chambers? Like, well, I can't afford it at the time being, maybe in the future. But the reason I was supported is, is the intimidation he brought up to me is that going to the city versus, versus, you know, you look at it, wow, the rich businesses can afford the chamber, those that don't can't. So then they won't have the inside scoop, right? The chamber's a full-time lobbying group within the city hall, right? So, you know, you have that in theoretically.
But that's not correct, Tom. When we've worked with many businesses, we don't care whether a business is in the chamber or not. I know Dan has worked with Shiba, but there's a, a number of businesses. Even, um, you know, when, when our, uh, Economic Development Committee reached out, they reached out to all businesses. It doesn't matter if you're in the chamber or not. That's not a criteria. And, um, I don't know why he felt like that. He obviously is a great business in town. He moved from a location and kept it there. So there was, uh, something about Darian he really liked, but it's absolutely untrue.
I mean, he wouldn't bring it up to me if it wasn't. I just, you know, I just-
Pardon me?
He wouldn't bring it up to me if it wasn't true, right?
No, I said it's, no, I'm not-
He felt intimidated by it.
It's not a fact that we can prove. I'm just saying, it's, it's a feeling he might have had. And I'm telling you, on our end, it makes no difference whether you're in the chamber or not. And Dan could add, I mean, he speaks with a lot of businesses, Dan. I don't know if you have anything?
No, I, I have to add to the, to their comment, Tom, because, you know, again, I have worked with Jim on several issues. The building permit process, from the liquor, uh, issue of it, from the potential drive-through. I was not aware of any such rhetoric in any shape or form, by no means. As a matter of fact, Jim came in and complimented how very friendly the building staff was, how we worked with them. And at the time, he was going to have both locations, or he did have both locations going as well. So, uh, again, I'm not sure how that information came about, but if there is something to the contrary, I would love to entertain that conversation.
Well, you know, Shiba is in my ward, Mr. Clistic, and I will go have lunch here shortly and if I, see if I have a conversation and see if that, if that goes any different. Thank you very much.
He started out in my ward.
Thank you.
And grew.
Well, speaking of economic development too, just in, as well as during the COVID time, when, um, rebates were given back to, uh, food and beverage tax was given back to every Darian business, regardless of them being a chamber member. And as, um, Administrator Vanna mentioned, when outreach happened to existing businesses, check-ins by the, um, Economic Development Committee, every business was reached. Chamber had nothing to do with it. So, um, Chamber is an organization, just like we have Rotary, Rotary and other groups within the community. Um, and it's, yeah, it's completely optional, um, you know, but there's lots of, um, Darian businesses that don't belong. And then there's businesses that belong to the Rotary, I mean, to the Chamber that aren't even in Darian. So, but, um, yeah, I think checking in with our businesses, um, is always appreciated, um, whether they're in our ward or they're not. Um, you know, to, to, to keep business local, I think is a great, great thing.
Yeah, you know, absolutely. But from a 10,000 view though, you do have someone that's the chamber in full, you know, in the city hall full-time. So, you know, it is beneficial to join. But for those that don't join, you know, they seem a little intimidated. So, that's all.
Yeah, and if you look at, um, the Illinois Municipal Review Magazine for February 2022, the recent one, page 18, it talks about getting your organization ready for retail recruitment. And it talks about putting a formal action plan together, putting together a, a, a specific team and be able to make sure you're, you're actually promoting your community. I don't think we do enough to promote Darian throughout the retail industry. So there's, there's, there's a great article in here how, in, how communities are taking a much more active role in be able to not rely on, on brokers, but actually take, take the lead for themselves. And that's really what this is-
I guess if we had such an issue, Eric, I don't understand why we have new businesses wanting to come into Darian.
Well, we got a lot of empty retail space, is what I'm saying.
There's not a lot of empty retail space.
There's a lot in my ward.
You have one, you have a shopping, you have several shopping centers in your ward.
Right.
You have the Darian Town Center, which has one vacancy, which is right there by the Edo Docking, okay?
And I've got the empty Walmart space.
Right next to that, in that other shopping center, Darian Town Center too, just had Wayback Burgers go into that center.
That's correct.
You have no vacancies.
And I'm trying to expand that center.
Okay. The Chestnut Court is where you have your vacancies.
Yes.
You have one center where you have your vacancies.
That's a huge center and there's a lot of vacancy in there. 30% vacancy rate.
That's a misnomer. You, you repeat that. You give the impression that there are vacancies throughout the city of Darian and that's just not true.
I'm talking about in my ward there is.
Let me talk, please. We have a gentleman who came to me, Joseph Fontano, who is going to be opening a Fry the Coop. You know how excited he is to come into Darian with the Steak and Shake? He has five other locations that he rents the space. He's going to buy Steak and Shake? He has five other locations that he rents the space. He's going to buy that building because he wanted to be in Darien. He came into the office and told me, when he found out there was a vacancy in Darien, he looked forward to come into Darien to take that vacancy. He's going to build that Fry the Coop there, okay? And that's your ward as well.
Yeah, and it's a high demand because it's a drive-through. So those are in hot, hot demand. So those go like that.
I wish you would not.
I had A and W lined up for that, too.
Phrase that we have a lot of vacancies because we don't. Look at your sales tax revenue, how it went up.
I looked at my list, and I saw a lot.
Just to add, I think, as I mentioned when we started this talk, the zoning code and some of these, I'll call key development areas, have gone now to the Plan Commission and gone to the Economic Development Committee. Dan and Jordan will soon be working on recommended text amendments to our zoning code. And our plan is to do what we did, you know, for many years, and I know the years that Dan has been here, is again, to meet with the owners and the brokers of these centers. So, I mean, that's, again, that's what our plan is, and that's what we intend to do unless the council has other ideas.
Because centers have the ultimate, because not, the Darien doesn't own these properties. Centers have the ultimate control on who they will allow in to their space, right? They might, you know, obviously, they're not going to want three hair salons in a row or, or, you know, you know, four different, you know, sushi restaurants. They have to have a variety. So they have the ultimate control since they own the property and manage it, correct?
Correct. And when the city council was discussing the marijuana issue, you know, we, in contacting the centers, we did find out a lot of centers do prohibit certain businesses. And, you know, I don't know which ones. I don't know that our brokers would know. But I, again, Dan has had great relationships. I have, the officials have, Mayor Marquez, Mayor Weaver, have had really good relationships with these property owners. I agree Chestnut Court really needs to be looked at, but that needs to be looked at in totality. I don't know if you, if we were to put one new store there, if that's a Band-Aid, or if the owners really want to do something creative and make that a mixed use. But I will tell you, I know Dan's fired up and Jordan's fired up. We're all fired up to start this as we look at these centers that maybe need to add mixed use, where there's residential there. And that is, in my opinion, ripe for that because it is an older center, and you do see towns now doing that, whether, you know, some are larger, like Indian Hills Golf Course in Bloomingdale or the shopping mall. They're doing a lot of those things. And again, before we want to put one business in there, I think that's the way to go. And I know it's been very difficult. Eric sent something out and residents gave ideas. And I think that gave some people a little false sense of what could go there. Everybody wanted the Whole, I think.
Trader Joe's.
Trader Joe's. Dan had known Trader Joe's couldn't get there because he's tried about four or five times. So again, I don't think that really helped us at all because it did set an expectation.
I got two leads out of that that I gave to Mid-America that they're following up on. So I did get two companies from that.
No, Eric, I'm sorry. I'm only talking about the residents. There was a lot of responses.
But what the residents gave me, I went and researched and called those companies, and I got two good leads that I gave to Mid-America based upon the input coming from the residents. It was helpful.
Yeah. Resident input is wonderful, but you did have a lot of people that wanted the Whole Foods now and think, they think that we can easily go get a Whole Foods and put it in. That's the only thing I'm mentioning.
And Trader Joe's was a perfect size for export because 15,000 square feet have been a perfect fit, except Trader Joe's wasn't expanding this market right now.
Correct.
But that could change.
Correct. So input from residents, we've done surveys for residents. We want that. We like that. All I'm saying is, there were a lot of comments of people wanting a Trader Joe's, where if we would have done it a little differently, we would have said, well, if you want a Trader Joe's, we're sorry, you can't have that. But again, that's, I'm back to the Band-Aid effect versus a looking at the whole parcel more creative.
And going back to.
Dan and I are already having those conversations with Mid-America, and we're going to have a follow-up on with Pine Tree. So.
About mixed-use developments and apartments?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, then, then I think that's.
And the mayor's going to be, was on the first call, he'll be on the second call.
And economic development is also, you know, that's been a major undertaking for them with Jordan and Dan and looking at all the different, not just that particular spot, but all of Darien.
And I think what Eric is saying is actually what I'm saying. That's the way to do it. You build a relationship. If you send out a broker, whether he's a contractor or employee, that's not like meeting with the mayor and alderman, alderwoman, and Dan. That's, I think, really important, and people do like that. And again, that's how we and primarily Dan has gotten a lot of businesses in here. And even in Chestnut Court, a couple of those businesses did come from Downers Kitty Corner when there was a couple spaces. So, you know, that's fair game. But just so we know, that is the plan, and that's what we are intending to do. And we're probably only at second base because the zoning is critical. We have to update the zoning for that center.
And that's underway?
Yes.
And, okay, so is everyone up to speed then on this whole scenario now that?
By no means did any of my comments mean we don't want input. We always want input. Actually, part of the, my favorite part of the job is when residents call me, give input, and we talk. So that.
And I think you're also making it clear that major attention is being placed on this. This is not, you know, lots of looks are being and hands on, all hands on deck on trying to figure out how to address this.
Yeah, and Dan or mayor, if you want to add, Dan, you, your department's working on this, and you've done it for years. You don't have to add anything, Dan, but if we left anything out, feel free.
Oh, I think we've done an excellent job over the years. I mean, I think the pride of our downtown area, for example, when we started that, how controversial that was, and look what it developed, you know, it's an anomaly to say that you build before you have tenants. We did that with the developer. We built before we had the tenants. And we were vacant for about a year, and we got Starbucks, and we got the rest of the fillings in there. What a great accomplishment, you know. And again, I can spend an hour with the history of Bonneville, you know, with the water tower, just the redevelopment of that whole area to make it the best that we possibly could to where it is today without having a choo-choo trade in town.
And Dan, to interject, just to interject, I'm not hearing anybody saying that you haven't done a good job at that over the years. What I'm hearing is, you know, how do we move forward?
Oh, yeah, exactly.
And that's the plan.
That was part of a redevelopment right there. That's a key redevelopment area, and we've accomplished it.
Great.
Now it's bigger and better.
In all my contacts with other mayor's and other towns, you know, I attend meetings, do page matters and managers. I meet with managers. I'm Brian from other towns. The developments that are going on in those communities are mixed-use developments, where they're looking at housing as well as retail. They're looking at retail that's geared to meet the needs of the people who are going to be living in those developments. They're not looking as much as for individual retail as they are the redevelopment of older centers that they currently have. So that really is the trend. So when Eric says we have a meeting coming up with, we actually had a meeting with the brokers, and the brokers could not give us an answer to my question.
Right, because we got Pine Tree.
Is it in mixed use? They said that's not our area of expertise. So we're going to set up a meeting to meet with those people who really can give us an answer. And the question's going to be, do you have plans for mixed use in this development? That's the question. Because that's when Dan and myself and Jordan and Brian will kick into gear, how we could work with them to fulfill a mixed-use development. And then you can bring that center back to life again. If you look at the opposite corner, someone spent millions of dollars to redo the facade on half of the buildings there, and yet 85% of them are empty. So redoing the facade didn't do them any good in Downers Grove. And they may have got export, but that's about it. You go over there, drive through there and see how many of those nice-looking fronts are empty buildings.
You know, and just to interject.
And then we're going to wrap it up.
Right. A lot of these developments, whether it's Darien Town Center, Chestnut Court, are under what they call REITs, Real Estate Investment Trusts. With that said, there's, it's a motivation of that REIT. And if they sell the REIT, who gets it next? What is the purpose of that property? Is it to produce income? Is it to produce loss? Is it to maintain neutrality? You know, so again, those are some of the insights we don't have. And in regards to a marijuana shop, none of these REITs will take on a marijuana shop until the federal government legalizes it. So I guess I just wanted to put that out there as a redevelopment clause.
I sort of looked at it as taking some of the workload off you guys, having someone do it part-time. As Brian mentioned, you know, he sees an empty store. Oh, man, he gets on it, he's on it. I'm looking at someone that already knows, hey, in two months, you know, this business is moving out, the lease is over, right, versus being reactive, oh, we have an empty space, let's work on it. So that's sort of how I looked at it. You mentioned you have to call them, hey, something's going on, you're involved. You have so much going on, you and Dan, you guys run the city. So I was looking at allocating budget as taking some of that workload off you and have someone, you know, come to you and the mayor, like, hey, this is an opportunity coming in six months. Versus, oh, man, someone moved out already, let's start moving. That's all.
It's kind of an opposite. Usually the staff comes and asks for more help. And I'm telling you, in this case, Dan or I, and all due respect to Eric, we looked at that and we discussed it.
Okay.
And we didn't think that's necessary. If the council wants to add that money in that position, you certainly have the right to do that. But from our perspective, that's part of the job that we have done and do.
Leave it to Dan's hands to decide, does he need an additional resource to be his right-hand person in respect to development? And if he feels he doesn't need it, you know, I respect that.
And that's what I'm saying. Dan and I talked about that, and we were under the same conclusion.
But I just want to make sure, I mean, he's got a huge, huge team to manage, you know, so it's just, do you have the resource to be able to do that? I know how great Chris is, but, you know.
Eric, I think Dan gets really excited when he can complete a project like Town Center, like the Darien Point Shopping Center. You have, when he did the water tower.
Oh, yeah. He loves the clock, I know.
He loves that. He really does.
You might find him sleeping under it someday.
Hey, you never know.
If he doesn't finish his own house, it might be his new home.
You always know what time it is.
And just to finish up, Eric, you know, and I appreciate the inputs. I really feel at this time that we don't need that broker because we can't, you know, with the Economic Development Committee or Commission, that's going to be a big help. But it's these REITs, these owners that we need to get to, which is very difficult.
Yep.
And they're silent. Somebody manages them. And a great example is, we still can't get in a date set to have a, you know, to have a conversation with Chestnut Court owners.
Right. Oh, I know.
You know, and again, it's like it's falling on.
On deaf ears.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, I understand. It's frustrating.
Right, but.
That's why it takes so much time to do that. I was just looking for a resource.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on this budget section for Community Development Department budget? Pages 2930. Okay. With that being said, then we will, the maintenance aspect of this budget is 968,929. We will move on then to municipal services. Does anyone need a bathroom break or a quick snack break before we start that?
It'll only take five minutes, right?
I doubt that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then we will get started. Page 37. Municipal Services Streets Engineering Budget. We'll start off by looking at page 38.
Mary?
Yes.
If I can back up the page.
Talk a little bit about page 37, I predict.
Page 37, yeah, I'm going to have another homework assignment for Brian here.
Yeah, I mean, yes, please do.
The drainage projects, about three quarters of the way down, projected estimated actual of 215,000. You with me? It's already 241 at January 31st, so you may just want to refine that number.
Yeah, I'll check that because that should have been a good number. I will double-check that.
Which one is that, Mike?
Drainage projects, Joe. 215 or 213 projected, and it's 241 at the end of January.
Anything else, treasure corn on that?
Not on that page, no.
Okay. So then we'll start off on page 38. We'll once again focus on the discretionary expenditures unless someone wants to, as we go in order, point out something else. So liability insurance for $7,500 for AED equipment and training.
I have a question on that, Mary. Number one, I thought we had that, didn't we have that in the previous year budget and it didn't get done, Dan, or am I right in that?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's just showing up here because we never did it in the past. Okay, and.
Just to interject on that, Mike, though, the AED equipment, when we looked at it, it was also leased equipment. So there was a continual cost. We weren't with that because they serviced the equipment as well, and it wasn't us owning it outright. So there would be, I don't remember exactly the way it broke down, but there was some training and then the cost for the leasing of the, it was like 10 or 11 units, whatever it was, because they come in every month, they run tests on them, they make sure they're good. If something's not right, the batteries are dead, the machine's not going to work, they take it out, they give you a loan. So there was a cost that was to repeat and a training portion. I don't remember the way it worked.
So this is now going to be an annual thing. So we did have it, we did put it in before, but this is an annual thing. Okay, because if this is an annual thing, then I would assume there would be a maintenance and not a discretionary?
I think probably it's in discretionary because we hadn't gotten to the point of actually doing it.
Discretionary item, it never's.
We didn't.
Oh, it's never been done? Okay.
So that's brand new, is that why?
Until we do it, I think then it would go into maintenance after that.
Okay, I thought we had done it before, but we hadn't done it.
And just like Brian said before, too, anytime anything's over $5,000, we bring it up to the council for formal approval, so you guys will have the full facts in front of you in order to make the decision of what the lease agreement means or however you're determined to do it.
Okay, and then this is the second part. I'm on the, basically the same account. Then if you go to account 4263, a couple pages later, it's also got training for AED of 2,500. This says a equipment and training 7,500, and that 4263 has 2,500 as just training. I just didn't know if there was a duplication or what that was.
Might have to check that, Mike. I don't know if there was, was a typo from last year's. Leasing or the equipment leasing and operations of it is not included with this.
Yeah, last year did have the same amounts, the 7,500 and the 2,500 in both those accounts.
One of the issues will be certifications required adults for call back.
Okay.
So we'll flag both of those for?
Just the one, the 2,500.
Just the 2,500, okay.
Like, and that was on page 39.
Account 4263.
That's page 40.
4263.
4263 is on page 40. Under Training and Education.
I got it marked, Dan, too. We'll look at some more.
So are you done with?
Yeah.
We go back to page 38, please.
Yeah, we're going to start back at the beginning. Now that, Mike, you done with your?
Yes.
AED questions? Okay, so we'll go back to page 38. And you, did you have something, Dan?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we just found out that the city hall HBA furnace, HVAC system, particularly the furnaces, they need to be replaced. They're approximately 18, 20 years old, and bottom line is, they need to be replaced. So we need to add 15,000 for the quote that we received. I want to put additional 2,500 for contingencies in there to be able to balance some of the upstairs offices as some of the staff members are too cold, some are too hot. So, you know, it's a typical HVAC syndrome, if you want to say. So total would be 17,500.
And what account is that, Dan?
That would go into 304223. We just got the quote last week, so we didn't want to.
4223, Dan, it'll go.
Yes.
Eighteen thousand, you said?
17,500.
That's in addition to the service contracts.
City team, Mike?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'm asking what you said. You don't remember what you said?
I remember what I said.
You going to list it as maintenance or are you going to list it as discretionary?
No, it's discretionary, really, but it's part of maintenance. I mean, really, we don't have enough.
We don't put it in, we'll do it as an emergency, so we should put it in the maintenance side.
And then we can get rid of all those.
Any questions on? Well, we have a total of 95,000 for maintenance discretionary. So now we're adding another 17,500.
That's a more specific item, correct.
Yes.
1025.
So on page 38, we've added 17,500. But is there any other questions on page 38? Otherwise, we'll move on to page 39 and discuss the other discretionary. Oh, no, none of those are discretionary. Yeah, they are. Hold on a second. Are they in the wrong column? Okay. Well, we have the chemical tanks, the waterfall wall, oh, no, the architectural build-out balcony, and the city hall police department plantings, 95,000.
And Dan, what's the cost of just ripping down the balcony and not rebuilding?
Well, we do need the balcony, at least the roof portion of it, because there's an entrance that will be open in the weather. So we would, at a bare minimum, need some type of canopy slash roof. You know, what's the cost? I have to earmark it for approximately 7,500 to 10,000 without not knowing what structure that's currently holding in place to the degree that it needs to be replaced.
But then you're chasing good money after bad. If you're going to do it, let's do it right.
Also, you're with the aesthetics of the building.
I mean, I was out there a year ago, and it was bad. I mean, it was wobbly and it's unstable. I mean, I was out there a year ago, it was bad, I mean, it was wobbly and it's unstable.
Yeah, you, you really don't want to be invited out onto the balcony. If you ever come to the office and I say, why don't you go out on the balcony?
It's obviously a code for something.
I don't think most people even know it exists. I asked a few people, how do you like the balcony at City Hall, what balcony?
Any other questions on those discretionary items? Under Maintenance plus the additional seventeen-five for the HVAC system?
I do have one more item that we need to increase slightly, and it's the Police Department Brick Retaining Walls. It's listed as twenty thousand, we have to add additional ten thousand, and basically it's, it's fortifying some of the existing wall that's currently in place and adding additional wall to prevent ongoing drainage issues that we've been having, and obviously over the years, we've come a long way in respect to keeping the buildings from flooding, including the PD and the offices over here. With that said, what we continue to do is we're always cleaning out the grates, there's grates on the Police Department side where the water's coming off of a property, off of Downers Grove property, and are incorporated and flowing into the curb line or adjacent to the curb line, there's wood chips that are currently in place over there, in which the reason for the wood chips is because you can't establish turf there because of the grass and because of the neighbors. So all those wood chips are basically coming down, clogging the drains, as they clog the drains, in some cases, they enter, there's a huge sub-pump pit, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, in which case, the sub-pump pits can and do fail, they'll trip because they get clogged, and then they have to go in there physically and clean them out, and hopefully by then, there's no water in the Police Department's saliport. The second part of it is, there's another retaining wall that's currently in place, and that one needs to be fortified, uh, just due to the height of it. We need a little more, or some more lift on it to say, so water doesn't cascade.
So that's an additional ten thousand, bringing the total to thirty thousand for that.
Yeah, we just got the quotes back today, we just found out also, you know, and part of the increases from these brick suppliers, last year was about a five percent increase, and they just, I've just heard today that they're increasing eight percent, an additional eight percent, basically due to labor shortage so they can retain people, retain employees.
Does this affect the performance of the police any or no? Because like Municipal Services, I mean, if the buildings dilapitate, does it really matter if we fix it? That was, that was, yeah, that was the criteria for Municipal Services, that if it's a dump and it doesn't affect the performance, do we have to fix it? So does our police still perform well even if we don't fix it? Don't spend the twenty thousand?
Tom, what are you referring to as a dump? Just, I.
Municipal Services.
The building?
Correct.
As a dump?
Correct, you mentioned that we shouldn't fix it if it doesn't affect the performance, so I'm saying, well, if it doesn't affect the performance of our police officers, do we need to spend thirty thousand dollars on a building?
Just for the people watching in the residence, I would debate, Tom, as to the hidden, characterizing it as a dump, but that's for another day.
That's for a separate meeting down the road, but I think that what Dan was pointing out with the thirty thousand dollars, it's, um, you know, a water retention, like preventing flooding, um, it's, this is not aesthetics, this is to, to, you know, prevent flooding into the building. That's what the purpose of it is, it's not a beautification thing.
It's a drainage issue.
Drainage, mhm. So I don't think we want any of our buildings flooding.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm fine with it, I'm just saying, I see two different criterias used for judgment, that's all, if we're gonna use the same criteria.
I don't think we're comparing them in the same.
If it affects the performance of someone's job, then it doesn't need to be fixed, so that's what we're saying Municipal Services, if it doesn't affect their job, why should we fix it?
Alderman Clistic, I don't think this is in the same category as talking about the Municipal Services building, we're talking about preventing water from entering a building, police station or City Hall, um, I don't think, you know, we're not gonna talk about the Municipal Services building, we're talking about this particular project and wanting to make sure the building stays dry, okay? So let's just focus on this topic right now.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I agree with it, you know.
Okay, we can keep our commentaries about the Municipal Services building when we discuss that at a later date. Any other questions on this?
And how much, I'm sorry, how much was that additional?
Total of, uh, total is thirty thousand, so we're increasing it by ten thousand, again, this will come back to the City Council for approv, formal approval with competitive quotes.
Twenty plus ten, right, now to thirty plus ten?
Twenty plus ten, thirty okay.
And then we're adding another seventeen-five for HVAC, so we've added another forty-seven five to the discretionary for this, um, forty-two twenty-three maintenance building, so it brings it from ninety-five thousand discretionary to one forty-two five, is my math correct?
No. The City Hall Police Department Brick Retaining Wall was under maintenance, considering part of it was already in place.
Oh, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm adding too much over, okay. Correct.
Carry the one.
One oh-two-five for the discretionary and then one twenty-seven six, six eighty-six for the maintenance.
Thank you for the math there, Alderman Kenny.
Hey, once in a while, once in a while.
No, appreciate it. Any ques, more questions on that? Okay, we'll move down to, um, next discretionary item is rent equipment, sixty-two hundred. A tub grinder.
For the brush pickup.
And once again, preceding the summary pages are backup items for these things. Any more questions on that? Nope, yes, Corn?
Not on that particular item.
Nope, moving down.
But on the same account, the, and it's under the maintenance, the Vector rental, two months at thirteen-five per month, Dan. In, in the Water Department, we're renting the Vector for six months for the meter replacements, and that's at twelve-five per month, this is a thousand dollars more per month?
It's the same, it's the same program, and again, this is the residual, and we're not a hundred percent sure if we're gonna need it, we wanted to make sure that we had the funds available as the meter replacement program rolls out in May. The goal is that instead of doing, um, excavations.
No, I, I understand that, the question though is, it's thirteen-five a month in one account and it's twelve-five in the other account. This account is showing thirteen-five, and in the Water Department budget for the six months, it's at twelve-five per month?
I think maybe just we weren't sure if there'd be any increases as we get later into the year.
Yes, that's true.
Cost of these machines are going up, just like every, you know.
Yeah, I would assume they would go up on both sides, so.
Possible, I think we had enough because, uh, if it was twelve or twelve-five, I think we had enough a little bit for a little bit of an increase to cover six months in the water.
Or five, we'll leave it at the words, Adam, if you want to balance and pull it out and reflect.
It was just the inconsistency, I was wondering why.
Yeah, it had to be a typo, that's, that's all it was.
So are we keeping it the way it is noted?
We're fine with that, yes, again, we're trying to, you know.
Do you have formal quotes on that, Dan, that's set?
Those are ready, we're doing, right, correct, we're just gonna come back and.
Well, we'll fix it then, I mean, yeah, right, just to be consistent with.
At this point, I mean, we don't have a new quote for the upcoming, we're not sure if we're gonna need it in November, if we're gonna need it in May.
No, but I think what Mike said, each time we rent it, no matter if it's for water or this, it's gonna be the same amount, so I'm just saying.
Well, it, it might, it might go up slightly, I mean, everything is going up with.
But it'll be consistent, it'll be the same.
Okay, yeah, we can be consistent.
Except minor thing, okay.
Anything else, Treasure Corn, on that?
No.
Okay. Moving on down to Supplies Other. There's the, um, Winter Banner Replacements and the, um, Barricade Rental for twelve thousand dollars. Yes, Treasure Corn?
Again, not those particular two items, but under Maintenance, there's two, the last two items, Asphalt Restoration and Three Flashing Stop Signs, those are both new items for this year. What's, what is the Asphalt Restoration, Flashing Stop Signs, I think I know, but.
The Asphalt Restoration is just, we've, I believe that was earlier last year as well, am I mistaken, Mike?
No, it, it wasn't, that's why.
It wasn't, then we just broke it out for additional Public Works projects, just for breaking it out, um, trying to put an example.
It's like patching, yeah.
Patching, basically.
Is that ever an MFT, Dan, and you had to move it out?
That was part, we were using orange, you see, the company we were using, we had to pull that out, so that's part of it, but still asphalt and just general patching that we will be doing, it's not contractual services.
Yeah, but it was someplace else before, it's, it's not really a new item, it's just.
Correct.
Moved from MFT possibly to here.
It was supposed to be MFT, we had discussed this with the committee, and we pulled it out of MFT for reasons that we couldn't use that asphalt company under MFT funding, and so we moved it into Municipal Services.
Okay, so it's something we've done before, but it's just now appearing in this account?
Yes.
Okay. And what about the three flashing stop signs that Treasure Corn asked about?
Those are replacements.
For Manning and Fairview, the signs are aging and we're having trouble keeping them going.
Okay. Anything else, Treasure Corn?
No.
Okay, um, moving to account forty-two fifty-nine, Small Tools and Equipment, there's a discretionary of twenty-one thousand dollars that's on page forty. Any questions on those items? Okay, we'll move on to Training and Education for eighty-six hundred dollars. We already, uh, at the start of it, when we were talking about the AED equipment, um, on page thirty-eight, under Liability Insurance, um, we're, we've put in a side or a note on the Training AED in this account to get clarity, um, so that'll be brought back to us. Anything else under that line or that header, Training and Education?
Uh, well, the Arborist Training was seven hundred and fifty dollars last year, and it's doubled to fifteen hundred this year.
We now have two Arborists on staff, one of our Arborists with the initiative, and got certified and very proud of it.
Okay. Anything else under that? Okay, uh, moving down to Operating Continue, we have six thousand dollars for Utilities, Gas Electric Sewer discretionary. Okay, nothing there, we'll move on to Forestry, isn't that exciting? A hundred and twenty thousand, four oh-five in discretionary. A lot of fertilization, we control, yes, Dan?
Let me, uh, just stop you with the tree, see, we got the fertilization, I'm looking from one specific line item, tree trimming, I'm not sure if we can get to that one yet, uh, don't want to miss that.
That's, that's the next page on forty-three seventy-five, Dan.
All right, thanks, we'll move to that point, I can make a comment on that.
Okay, any questions on Forestry?
Yeah, on seventy, my favorite topic, Seventy-Fifth Street.
The planters, mulch areas, Eric?
Well, it's like, what, now, we're, we're incurring some costs here, and what are we getting now from the county for maintaining Seventy-Fifth Street?
A matter of fact, coming up to Municipal Services, we have a brand-new agreements coming up in DuPage County.
Great.
It's gonna be a three-year agreements for the reimbursement of the city to, reimbursement of the city to mow, uh, the rightways.
Okay.
The parkways of Seventy-Fifth Streets, Plainfield Road, um, and they've also increased the frequencies, I believe it's two or three additional times, which will be giving us additional revenue, and I want to say that revenue is closer to fifty thousand now.
Okay.
I have to double-check that, but that is, uh, what has been negotiated now for a new service, and that's coming back to Municipal Services, like I said, this is coming one day.
Now, is that up from what it was in the past? Okay.
Yes, and I want to say it's up.
Good.
Yeah, maybe two thousand dollars, I don't recall specifically.
Okay. Now, how does that, is that cover our costs?
It covers our, pardon, the mowing costs.
Okay, but what about the fertilization and everything?
No, it doesn't cover all the costs, doesn't cover the cost for fertilization, you know, maybe it covers a part of it at best.
Okay.
Um, you know, we've been trying to utilize summer helpers, which has been beneficial in that respect, but the problem is that we haven't been able to.
Get summer help.
Later, so, again, we've been using our staff to do that, and, and again, that's the key corridor, and.
Oh, I.
Really, I, I think, you know, our staff does a better job than if we were to contract it out, or if DuPage County was to contract it out, um.
I know you do a better job.
In addition to the, the planters, obviously the planters, that's part of the beautification project, and with the irrigation system now in place, um, you know, the plantings need to be upgraded, and that's from over the years, we haven't upgraded the plantings since they've been installed, I believe it's, what, five years now, four years or so?
Five or six, yeah.
Yeah, so some of them have died off, uh, you know, and they say that the plantings don't need water, and let me know if a plant doesn't need water around here, and, you know, let me know how it survives, but especially with the salt, rest of the salt, there's an upgrade in the plantings as well. So back to your question, Eric, yes, there is.
Okay, good.
You know, some costs that we have taken upon, the City Council has taken upon the city.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that, Mike?
Yeah, Dan, you may have just answered this question, but the plant contingency shown is twenty thousand dollars, that was five thousand dollars last year.
Correct, and again, it's back to.
That's, okay, that's right.
The irrigation system, to make sure that we can get things replanted and look at it.
Yes. Ted?
About the EAB, are we all done with that, all the trees and everything, you know?
At this point, the answer is yes.
Okay.
What's gonna happen in a year, you know, I, I think, uh, Michigan State, Michigan State University's been the lead, the lead agency on, and probably the best source of information that we've had, uh, we still may have a couple stragglers, but it's nothing to the alarm that we've seen, nor have we heard that we need to gear up again for another round of, uh.
Spraying?
Protection, same, yeah, what they were calling, EAB, or Tree Iger, whatever the product is called, so, yeah, we're very sensitive to that, again, I think that's the best decision, uh, city ever made, and, you know, in respect to saving those trees instead of taking them all down.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, my sister's community, they were all just mowed down.
It's been like two hundred and fifty thousand, but we saved, like, two million or in trees?
Oh, if we were to do a value on it, easily.
Except my wife hates that tree, it's a very dirty tree.
Yes, tree?
Yes, very dirty tree, and it also has in the summer, so my daughter has to park on it, full of spiders, tons of spiders in that tree.
Let's take a look, Eric, maybe we do something else going on over there? You want to eliminate all the spiders?
Her whole inside of her car gets full of spiders, you've never seen such an ugly thing.
Oh, dear, I'm gonna have a nightmare about that now.
I'll have to have you.
Because I have one on my property along as, I have one on the parkway and then one on my, in my yard, and I, I've never seen that, but now, now I'm gonna see it, now that Eric pointed it out, and I'm gonna be like, oh, spiders.
Calls for spiders.
I had the Arborists come out.
Yeah, okay, wow, I'm gonna have a nightmare about that tonight. Thanks, Eric.
You're welcome.
It is a beneficial insect, as Mr. Balzak pointed out.
Yeah, tell my daughter that.
Yeah. Any other questions on Forestry? Okay, Streetlight Operating and Maintenance, thirty-five thousand dollars.
Can we turn to page forty-seven on that one?
Um, page forty-seven?
It's on page forty.
Oh, for the backup, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the backup.
So we're actually gonna, is the, is the, we'll probably need to move to page forty-one, right?
Yeah, first item.
The line item on forty-one?
Thirty-five thousand's on the bottom of page forty, the thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, but the, the line item's actually at the top of page forty-one, but then the backup is page forty-seven, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, and Dan, I mean, this, it looks like, I mean, the city is to take over the existing streetlights from Farmingdale Drive, I mean, are, and then it's also considered to be a, considered to be private area, so are we now incurring the cost that the apartment management should be taking over? I'm just trying to understand why.
I think that's a, it's a loaded question.
Yeah.
In our opinion, in a municipal services, uh, philosophy, if it's in the parkway, it belongs to the city.
Okay.
Okay, we had a similar situation back, uh, probably four or five years ago on Ports Mount, where we had the same situation where there, these lights, this lighting system was put in, there were shorts in there, and all the shorts were leading back to individual There were shorts in there and all the shorts were leading back to individual units. So, I forgot. There was five homes that had meters, were basically on a circuit breaker. And the circuit breaker would trip from the rightaway due to some fault potentially until to the point where they wouldn't turn on. The city hall lights been here. So, the same thing has happened on Farmingdale, where these lights are now not working at all. They have tried to identify it, identify the problem. Number one, the lights are outdated. Well, they replaced them. They did try to put a valiant effort into replacing them. The wiring that's in place is no good. Consistent ground faults. I would not even try to go in there and repair it because to repair it, it's just going to be ongoing concerns. The lighting that's in there is not part of any standard. We don't even know, you know, who the manufacturer is. When we put in lights, we standardize them. You know, we standardize them either to the entire subdivision or to what the city currently uses. In this particular case, we would remove, I think it's up to six there. There's one that's debatable that we haven't really nailed down to where the wiring is coming from. Basically, we would remove all those lights, give them back to the association, or basically scrap them if they don't want them. Number two is we would put up the aluminum twenty-five-foot lights up to four. So, we wouldn't be putting six back in place because we don't need them. If we get away with three, we're going to try to go with three. There's current existing ComEd light pole on the corner of Seventy-Fifth Streets. We want to evaluate that to determine whether or not we'll ask ComEd to remove that so we can put one of our standards there since it's a little more pronounced, if you want to say it.
But they're wired to the apartment building now. Is that going to stay that way or no?
That's correct. No, they'll all get eliminated. We will set a separate pedestal with the direction of ComEd where to put it. So, I mean, run UKO and unit up. So, that's the goal.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in front of an apartment complex that had a few incidents of catalytic converters even being stolen. So, it's... Brings a safety aspect to it.
Might need to put up five lights then.
So, we might need a few more, so... But, yeah, the lines are buried under asphalt unfortunately and they're going to be digging up a pavement to put in, so.
Any more questions on that? Thirty-five thousand. Okay. Moving down to contractual services drainage projects, one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand for the annual rear yard, city cost, Farmingdale Drive and grates and fences on Portsmouth.
Mary?
Yes.
Just, Dan, clarification. Should that be Sawmill Creek instead of Farmingdale Drive? Because Farmingdale Drive is what we just talked about, the light replacement. And the backup is showing Sawmill Creek, this basket drainage maintenance.
Page forty-nine?
Farmingdale Drive, yeah, beyond?
Yeah. Well, it says Farmingdale, but the backup says Sawmill Creek.
You know, there's... It's Sawmill Creek, but it's part of Farmingdale.
Okay, that's fine.
So, that's how you're looking at it, yeah.
But it's one project. That's just the...
It's one project, just, yeah, maybe for consistency, it's either one or the other. But I look at the creek and Chris looked at it, your word, subdivision was, so.
Okay. Any questions on any of those projects? Tim Belzak?
How does the rear yard drainage backup look this year? How many houses do we have or...
You know, we have probably about up to twelve potentially. Unfortunately, I don't have good information of what it's going to include. If you recall, two years ago or prior to us doing all those this year, we had information from almost two years that we were able to accumulate. Due to the snow cover this year, we weren't able to get out there yet in many cases. So, someone took a conservative approach and said, okay, this is what a good average was. That's why we put these minds in there. We have them targeted. It's just with the snow now. And finally, it just started thawing. Now, we just had the ice again. So, it's a little deceiving to look at ice with the rain that came and say, okay, you qualify. So, we have to, you know, we have to do some due diligence to that, but we feel fairly comfortable that the number in here is good. If we have an inventory, then we'll carry on for next year.
So, this is a guesstimate for about twelve projects?
Correct.
Yeah, and what is it? I've got in... Somewhere on Cambridge Drive, a good friend of mine and his neighbor built up his whole backyard. And now, his yard now is flooding dramatically because of the built-up of the neighbor next door. So, all the water's now sitting down and then the utility boxes get two, three feet of water covered. And what's he supposed to know with this? And this neighbor, I mean, never had an issue before until the neighbor built up the yard.
Unless somebody can prove through an affidavit in this case that he had raised his property, we'll double-check a permit, but typically we wouldn't let anybody that doesn't sound familiar.
Okay.
Typically, when somebody wants to raise the grade on a property, anything more than four inches, we will require a topographical survey. And topographical survey should also... Will also include a probably anywhere from two to three homes adjacent to their property or downstream.
Because I was over there today. It's a good foot. He raised it, at least a foot.
Okay, again, we have to...
And put a fence around it.
Pretty recent, Eric, you think?
Yeah, it was a...
Within a year?
Year and a half ago.
What do you do, Eric? Put additional dirt down and lynch out over them?
Yep. Yep. And build up a big retaining wall and stuff and built it way up.
Number one, we have to take a look at it.
I'll come by and bring the address to you.
See what the cause of effect is, see if it was permitted. If there's a negative effect, then, you know, somebody's going to have to come forward with some type of affidavit. We just said you can't go out there and just say, you know, unless we had records, more than likely, we don't have records that indicates what the topo, the topographic survey was or the topographic grade was. So, it's very difficult for us to go in there and prove something like that.
Okay. All right, I'll talk to you on that one. Thank you.
Going back, any other questions on the drainage projects? For one-hundred-and-thirty thousand five hundred? Okay. We'll move down then to forty-eight fifteen, equipment with a discretionary of four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars.
Mary, I think you skipped some tree trimming.
You skipped tree trimming. Oh, I'm so sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment.
No, no, back to tree trimming. I was looking over to the... Yes.
And I don't have... In particular, what I want to discuss is tree trimming, the actual trees, the removals and the stump removal. I just had a courtesy call from Holmer Tree this afternoon and they have provided, that courtesy call, that they will not be renewing their extension for the contract, which is coming up for next January. Typically, we'll be looking to bring that back to the city council in August. So, our representative just called me and said that the pricing is going up. At the pricing they're at right now, and the example is, I think they're fifty-five dollars per tree. They are actually losing money due to fuel costs, so on and so forth. So, again, my thought process was to have him provide us an email with a counter offer and the staff was going to take a look at and decide whether or not we should go out for additional, go out for bids and try to negotiate with them. And that negotiation would be based on bids that have currently been opened. It's my understanding that trees... Tree trimming has skyrocketed up to eighty dollars per tree. So, I can't even give you that cost right now without doing some due diligence, but we do have to put a little marker to that one and I'll be putting revised figures to that this week yet. Yeah, it's up to a hundred and some cases.
Wow.
So, yeah, I don't want to be very bad news, but I just found that information out, so I'm waiting to do some additional work.
As we go through that, Dan, I know we've got budgeted for seventeen-hundred-and-fifty trees. Is it possible to extend it out a year and reduce the number? Or what are your thoughts on that?
I would not want to do that. I think the program that we currently have in place, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's optimal. Could it be better? Yes, but to reduce it, I think would be just an alarm. And the alarm would be the trees tend to grow rather quickly, especially over the roadways. And when we start having trees that are interfering with vehicle traffic, buses, UPS trucks, larger trucks.
Snow plows.
Snow plows. There's damage that will occur, especially with the, you know, during the winter. In the summer slash, I call it the summer, the leaves obviously foil out and then the residence side or the sidewalk side, those we tend to have a lower canopy. Then we have the issue of those tree branches that are hidden residents in the face.
Okay, answered.
Any other questions on tree trimming?
So, you're going to get back to us with additional figures, Dan?
Yeah, we'll do some budgetary figures and see if we have the opportunity to maybe create some negotiation prior to...
Okay.
And if not, Dan, we'll probably update this anyway because we know the number's low.
Right.
Even if you're not able to get a price, we'll come up with something for budget.
So, that'll go on the list of a revisit.
Yes.
Okay. Along with the AED machine.
I just want to mention, that's a great investment. When you walk through the area and you see the trees being trimmed, especially when you're selling houses in real estate, you go to an unincorporated area where there's tree branches on the sidewalk all over the place. So, it does really give a nice view, a nice look to the city when those trees are properly trimmed, especially your walking, hiking.
Seventy-Fifth Street, I constantly brag about that, but when you drive down Seventy-Fifth Street, especially on a nice summer evening, you just see that whole canopy, how even it is and so, something, you know, that's an aesthetic look for the city, yes.
Okay. That being said, thank you. We'll go on to equipment for four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, and I've got a question on that first one. Dan and Chris, this is the one I brought to your attention. I think there might be two pieces of equipment with this if you look on page fifty-five. I mean, are we talking about one piece of equipment here or two? Because I think, wasn't it... We weren't sure what the pricing was going to be, Chris, or something and...
That's further down. That's not the... Well, maybe. So, yeah, well, the price is the two-hundred and fifty is the correct price. So, they do, on the quote itself, he lists two different machines, one being a tier three.
Yeah.
And the other one is a tier four. So, that's just the difference between emissions. And he can't guarantee that he has the tier three or not. So, when you go through, if you look at the ticker that I have on the far right side where I've added up the prices, you'll see I only included the one forty-three.
One, yeah.
And then the rest is all options and then a continued...
So, the rest of it's options. Okay. All right, thank you.
And that refers all again to emissions, which in which case...
Expensive piece of equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do have another change. We just got notified by the manufacturer, Chris did, a couple days ago, truck number one-ten. That's the nine-ton dump truck. We need to up that by forty... Forty-two thousand plus twenty-five hundreds for a total of three oh five.
So, this is going to do more than the sidewalk plowing? It's going to actually do grass cutting too?
I'm sorry, you're back on the first one, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. I mean, because it says sidewalk plow for two fifty, but it's more than a plow.
Yes.
It does have the dual capabilities, yes.
Okay.
I was going to ask, obviously, this is for the budget for next year. Is there a way that we can order this now or get this to city council?
That's what...
Where I'm coming from with this, because with all...
Microchips in our town.
Chris, go ahead. You could tell them what they told you.
Well, so, if you're talking about the sidewalk plow...
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. We...
Either one.
Okay. So, with the sidewalk plow, I could definitely reach out to him and find out anything about that. I don't know specifically with the truck itself. So, right now, basically, the indications I'm getting is the same company that we're getting the quote from for the large truck, we have two trucks currently on order that we ordered in April of last year. So, April of twenty-one for the current year's budget. We're not going to... We'll be lucky if we see one of the trucks before May first and then we'll be lucky if we see the other one by the end of the year of 2022. And realistically, if... He said they are taking, basically, right now, it's a waitlist order. They're taking an order and basically, from the sound of it, you're probably looking at the truck actually not being produced until somewhere in quarter two or quarter three of 2023. And that's from just the truck manufacturer. It then has to go to the equipment manufacturer and get outfitted. So, honestly, realistically, when you see the truck, I don't know. My opinion, if it's... If it looks like everybody... If it looks like it's going to pass, I would get the order in as soon as possible. At least from the side on the truck equipment part, he's kind of said it doesn't look like they're talking about any increases. The truck itself, the cabin chassis, the indication I'm getting from them is that they're talking about the possibility of quarterly, basically quarterly raises on the truck, even if you have an order placed and you have a contract with them. There's really... They can't guarantee prices. They're not talking... They don't think they're going to... They're talking about significant increases at that point, but they really have no clue. And it's all related, as everybody knows, it's all related to the supply chain issues, chip shortages, all that stuff. And so, when every time you hear them say, oh, there's an end in sight, I mean, how can anybody know that, you know, realistically?
Chris, I'm going to mistake it. I think also you told me that there's some clauses now they put out there that they have the right to raise prices.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They basically... The truck manufacturer has basically indicated, even if you get an order placed in, they're talking about possible quarterly increases, basically surcharge pricing increases to whatever you order.
Which has happened already, Ted, if I may.
Yeah, we... On the two trucks that we have on order right now, the one truck that we're going to get, hopefully, maybe by May first, they increased... There was a fifteen-hundred, approximate fifteen-hundred-dollar price increase, just on the cabin chassis. And on the other truck that we won't get until maybe by the end of the year, they increased because they came out with a new model in the meantime and it basically stuck us with about an eighty-five-hundred-dollar price increase.
And do we put that... Do we forward that for budget for accounting purposes? I don't see it.
Did we do what, Dan?
Did we take that truck that we're not going to get potentially till after May? Did we stick it in this budget then?
Yeah, any truck that was on order that we didn't get yet, we put into this new budget.
That was not... Was that the water? I'm sorry.
No, no, you have... No, hang on. So, you have... One oh nine.
Is there one more?
It's in here. So, it's that one and then...
That's meant to be in this fund or will it be in the water fund?
Yeah, you have two in the water fund right now that are on order that we probably won't get before the end of April.
And we put those back in for next year.
And this one's for a nine-ton, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're getting two nine tons. We got them on order. We don't know when we're going to get them. When's our next nine ton coming up? Are we at a rating of seventy-nine?
So, right now, the truck one-ten is honestly... That's... It's just shy of the seventy-five rating, but seeing, basically, what I told Dan is, seeing how long they're telling us, the order time, the lead time is, this truck has already been, this truck one-ten has been into Rush Truck Center three or four times already[1603.66] this truck has already been, this, this truck one-ten has been into Rush Truck Center three, three or four times already this winter. Basically, we, out of the first four snowfalls that we had it, we got to use it for not even three hours.
No, Chris, I, I, I'm not worried.
Yeah, I don't, the next truck, I'd have to go back and look to see what, when the next truck is up. And I, it might be in the three-year projection. I'd, I'd, I'd have to look back.
Chris, some of these, I'm sorry, some of these we listed here are the trucks, even if we're not going to buy those, so the council could see. As I'm seeing one.
Yeah, so truck one-oh-three is anticipated in twenty-five. And so, again, and, and basically every, I mean, we just, so what we're seeing is, is we went from a truck on, on another nine-ton truck. You know, there's a little bit of difference because the, the nine-ton truck that's being proposed, the one, unit one-ten, has a chipper cap and so it has a couple different things that we may look at, but all things aside, they're relatively equal because we have an underbelly scraper on, on the one that's on order. So let's just call them, I mean, we went up seventy thousand dollars potentially. That's, that's a substantial, you know, increase and, and I can't.
Because all my recommendation would be, is if we're going to be, obviously, we're doing the right thing. We're God willing, we're at the mercy of whatever we're going to get. But the one for fiscal year ending twenty-five, you might want to look at it in twenty-four because it may not come into twenty-five. You know what I'm saying?
That's what we're basically trying to do.
And, and going back to the, the track list, okay, if I was in your guys' shoes, I'd, I'd see if you can get that thing in, in as fast as possible and see if we need to pay for it even this year. Because we don't know what's going to happen. We really don't when it comes to these vehicles.
Ted, are you saying the nine-ton, we might as well put in next to twenty-three?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So you're, you're, are you, make sure I'm understanding. Are you, you saying to try to order two trucks in twenty-three?
I, I, put it to you this way. If we've got one that's coming up in twenty-five, okay, you might want to ask, you know, put it in in twenty-three at the beginning of it, to, so we pay it in twenty-four, even though it's supposed to be for twenty-five. Do you see, because we don't know.
I, I mean.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, if we move a truck, since this is a three-year budget, really, if you move a truck from twenty-five to twenty-three, it's immaterial.
Right, exactly.
The, the bottom number, I, I would, I think that's a really good idea, given what's going on.
They're similar enough in, in the equipment because both trucks are used for chipper, so they would both have chipper caps. They would basically be, I mean, honestly, having them done at the same time for controls and everything for operate, operation side, makes things a lot easier because even sometimes year to year, there's slight differences. So one guy gets into a truck. So, yeah, I mean, I can have them duplicate the, the quote basically and.
And the rating's pretty consistent.
Here's the other thing that goes with this, okay? We get new trucks, we get them, we know we have them, we know we're set. At the same time, these older trucks, which normally don't get any money out of them, there's going to be somebody out there that's going to need them. We might get a little bit extra money on those.
Well, yeah, and if you're, if, if anybody's paying attention to what the used, used, you know, car and truck value is right now, those, those prices are.
Well, you just beat me because I was thinking with, with, with the labor shortages and you just talked about how Homer's got to raise their, their prices on, on the tree trimming because of things. Are there any businesses that are going under that we might be able to capitalize and see if we can, you know, buy any of their used equipment? To, obviously, a little lesser cost and it's, obviously, used equipment is available now.
Probably the county.
I, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I, I mean.
I mean, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's a stretch, it's a reach, but it's an idea, so.
Is, you know, where do we go? Where do we go? What do we find if somebody's, you know, like Homer, for example, I'll just use Homer or a tree, any type of tree service. We don't need those types of trucks.
What about the big auction places, like the one on, out on eighty?
Well, I wasn't saying Homer. I was just saying, I was just.
I'm just using an example.
Right, okay.
One of the types of equipment that's out there, one needs to get fabricated. I would never, ever buy a snowplow from an auction or to the company.
Right, you've got to buy new. You have to buy new. You don't want somebody else's problems. You never know what's going to go on.
I mean, even our trucks, the plows that we get, they, they use them more than likely. They use them for plow trucks, they use them for dumping services.
Well, what I'm saying is, if, if somebody had a two thousand nineteen truck, two thousand, we'll say two thousand eighteen, okay? And they went out, they, they're going out of business and they're going under.
They're going out of business.
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying. I wonder, is there any businesses that are going under that have, might, might have newer equipment that we can, we can capitalize on?
They're going to go through an auction.
They're going to go through an auction, yeah.
So Ted, I want to understand what you're saying. The nine-ton that we have budgeted for twenty-five, you want us to put that in this current year's budget, twenty-three?
You could do it this year or you could do it next year, but I'm telling you to do it a year ahead.
Brian said, because the three-year really doesn't matter. We could do it this way then if we order it.
I would put in twenty-three, yeah.
I would just buy it now if that, if that's the, if that's the direction. Because costs are just going to continue to go up.
That's the first thing. Second thing is, is that we lose one of those trucks, that's when people start saying, well, where's my snowplow? What's going on? You know, we don't want to go through, through that nightmare.
So Chris, what do we do? We put the truck one-oh-three nine-ton dump into?
We'll, we'll double check it, discuss it, make sure that we got the right vehicles and, you know, before. So let's just get on the.
So I've got it on the list to revisit equipment thirty dash forty-eight fifteen about the potential of adding another nine-ton dump truck. And we've already know that we're, page sixty-one, the price has gone from two thirty-five, did you say to three oh five?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the one is, the, the one that we're proposing went from two, we had a budget price of two sixty. That one went to three oh five.
Okay.
The two thirty-five is okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary, that's the one.
Okay.
So it's going up forty-five thousand, so you're looking at a nineteen percent, eighteen, nineteen percent increase.
So instead of four ninety-five, you're looking at five forty.
Okay. With the potential of adding another truck. But you're saying too that, okay, the prices as they appear, we're not locking into prices when ordered, they're subject to change. So, okay.
Yeah.
Tom, do you have anything?
So, following up on what Ted said, there's four items in here for year twenty-four. A one-ton pickup, McLean sidewalk plow, a one-ton dump plow truck and a concrete mixer. Are any of those items going to take over a year? And if they are, is that something we should be looking at now?
Right. Well, we'll take, we'll do our homework and take a look at and see what, see what the trucks.
I mean, yeah.
I don't want to jump the gun and say that we should order everything because that's just going to go and with our ratings.
No, I, but we got.
Yeah.
Two months to, before the budget's final, so we got time to do it. But I'm just saying, it's something to investigate now. What is the timeframe on these things? Is it something to put it in this year? So if we're not paying for these things till we get them, correct?
Exactly.
So.
Does it go in this year's budget then if it's not going to be received?
Yes.
It will.
If we're looking at a just regular, you know, pickup truck, yeah, you know, we may be on a four or five-month delay, okay? We're not?
No, we're longer than that.
Okay, so we're longer than that.
Yeah.
The point is, these specialty items and specialty equipment, we have no idea when we're going to get these things in. So, you know, if we're going to do it, you know, let's prepare ourselves for the worst and hope for the best, as I look at it, so.
Especially with the larger trucks, because if we're having this problem.
Everybody else is.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think what the consensus is, is that we need to come back to this equipment budget. Dan and Chris, you'll get some updated numbers and then we'll discuss the possibility of adding in equipment that's, was intended to be in the twenty-four and twenty-five budget.
Right.
Yeah, if we could get a number for each one.
Yeah, we, we did have numbers.
And make sure that, you know, we're not pushing anything out.
Right.
Okay.
How the vehicle policy manual has worked out, in my opinion, very well.
Okay.
Very well for the time.
Well, it's, it's been phenomenal. It really has been, but we're at the mercy of all the manuals that says it's here. Oh, when can we order it? Two years from now. Well, what are we going to do? You know?
I, I agree. I agree.
Any more questions on equipment for now? We will be coming back to equipment. Any more questions on the municipal services, streets and engineering budget? Just to summarize, Dan and Chris, we need you to come back with us on item, on page forty, item number forty-two sixty-three, the AED. On page forty-one, forty-three seventy-five, tree trimming. And then lastly, on page forty-one, forty-eight fifteen, equipment. Okay, so you'll come back to us on those items, okay? I'm not even going to give a total because the numbers went all over the place, so, okay. We're all done with this budget. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess, grab a snack, go to the bathroom. I'll see you guys back here at eight forty-five and we will move on to capital projects. Projects Fund, page sixty-nine. Supporting documents, starting on page seventy with the summary. But as far as the capital projects, we got revenue of five million sixty-seven, five ninety. Then expenses, six million eighty-three, three sixty-five. Well, Mike, do you, you've been traditionally talking about the summary page there?
I just have a minor thing for Brian at some point. Just a couple thousand dollars. I'll deal with him.
Really?
So.
Mary, I'm sorry, there is one comment in the fiscal year twenty-two estimated actual, if you go down to the, almost the bottom, there's three hundred and sixty-six thousand number.
Yes.
That number comes out. That should not be in there. And the effect is it adds three sixty-six to the capital projects fund.
Is that part of our hundred thousand?
It was from la, it was a previous year that was, that we spent money, but in the current twenty-three, you'll see the five hundred as a, in parentheses, that's the, that's what you're talking about.
So does that mean the available balance is now ten, four, no, ten, three, nine, something?
Yes. Yeah, I, I didn't update the total yet. I just made a hand note to remove it.
So it's saying three sixty-six would carry all the way through.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. Okay. Well, then we'll jump over to page seventy. And stormwater ditch projects.
Yeah, let's talk about this.
Okay, so we got a discretionary expense of one million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred.
I'm going to summarize this.
Could you please, Dan?
Yes. In respect to the total of ditch projects we had, I believe it's twenty-one miles of ditches.
Twenty-seven, Joe.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, twenty-five.
Thank you, Joe. I appreciate that. I was.
Who's counting?
But, uh, all sidewalks, that's it. But, uh, the ditches, we put a program together probably close to twelve years ago, fourteen years ago. And this is the final portion of the ditch program and we're complete. So it's a great accomplishment considering where we've been. Again, to see this part done, now it's a matter of public works and vigilant residents policing what people do out in front of their homes. It's been working out great.
And Dan, could you just clarify, because there's, if residents are watching, there's ditches in backyards, front yards. This is all, just clarify what this is.
Yeah, ditches are basically what's in front of what we refer to as rural sections, where there's no curb and gutter. Curb and gutter is compared to ditches. So that's the main conveyance of stormwater to get it from point A to point B and out of town. And again, we developed a program catalog and this will be complete. So now it's just a matter of ongoing maintenance, which is the minimus in the grand scheme of things.
So can we turn to the support page then, like on page seventy-one?
Sure.
Talk a little bit, the specifics a little bit more.
Yep.
On this first one.
So, page seventy-one, and then there's maps.
How long has this one been an issue, that we've had this?
Since nineteen sixty-nine.
I mean, and what's, what's the impact to the residents of this?
And not having no puddle, I won't say puddling, water that cascades over driveways, culverts that are basically popping out of the driveways.
Okay.
Water that does not run through the ditches and again, across the driveway and across the roadways, which consistently deteriorates the, the roadway along with the base of the roadway, along with the shoulders.
Okay, so this could, could freeze up too, right?
Yes.
Eric, we, we had to wait till the basins were built until we could develop a plan to do these ditches, correct, Ian?
That's majority of it, yes.
We couldn't direct that water anywhere until the basins were built. We worked with the county to get the basins built. We actually had flooding. If you're familiar with Elm Street behind East Del South, there were homes there that were flooded every year. And with the county, we bought those properties. And we had to wait until the, working with the county, we, we did the Crest Basin and.
Yeah, I understand.
Crest Basin, Dale Basin, Dale Basin was, we did.
Yeah.
The Crest Basin, those were the two primary basins. And then with the buyout of the homes along Elm and Seventy-Fourth, gave a lot of opportunity for that quadrant of town. For the other quadrants of town, it wasn't worth doing it because the downstream effect was still those bases eventually. So basically, we have two avenues for water to get out of town. Number one is everything that's east of, uh, Richmond, probably Richmond, Rick, Chris. East of Richmond flows back towards the east, towards Clarid Hills Road, Clarid Hills Road, and goes back towards two ways. Sixty-nine Street slash, basically Sixty-nine Street to what's referred to as the eastern leg of Sawmill Creek. To us, it's referred to as the eastern leg of Sawmill Creek, as well as down Clarid and Hills Road, which is a major storm sewer, which goes towards Elm, from Elm, it goes back towards past the high school and basically releases at Seventy-Fourth Street and Elm. Seventy-Fourth Street and Elm is the critical junction point for almost everything. And then we're the, the Crest Basin, which takes care of a quadrant of Sixty-Sixth, which Woolbrook, we take on some of the water from Woolbrook and that's bilateral at Sixty-Sixth Street. So I'm getting too complicated, but the bottom line is that the detention basins all work very well. And now we're just, we just did, are in the process of doing that project at Seventy-Fourth and Elm with the native, uh, native project, native plantings. So there's an elimination of fertilization on that portion, as well as some maintenance savings cost and as well as for additional waters to be able to saturate those grounds, which will also help in the grand scheme of things.
So, w- once you're done with this, the increased water flow then, we're not going to create an issue farther down, are we? That all of a sudden it's going to flood down here now? We fixed it here and now all of a sudden it's flooding down? That all of a sudden it's gonna flood down here now, we fixed it here, and now all of a sudden it's flooding down here?
No, that's what we do in stormwater terminology, to increase the flow anywhere.
Right.
The bottom line is we do not increase any flow we maintain and/or have reservoirs that are able to accept it and release it as the downstream allows it to.
Okay, so this will fix the entire problem, not just that piece of the problem?
That is correct, this is the last parts of the puzzle, and our goals, our goals always have been not to do the ditches until we do the roadways the year prior to.
Okay.
And the, 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 all we will have now at this point is maintenance. When we took on this task twelve years ago, we knew that, you know, as Dan said at that time, tell me if I'm wrong, ditches last forty years.
Easily, I mean, there's, there's, the hard, the most, only maintenance that we're really gonna have is as long as the policing stays in force. There may be some erosion concerns, which is just maintenance, which will be just minor, and there may be some pipe replacements, the culvert metal pipes, those have a life, a lifespan, whereas we used a lot of HD plastic pipe. The HDP slash plastic pipe, there's really no shelf life on it, so, and, and Chris, I think it's been a real ass of a department.
Yep.
I think the thing that's.
Yes, Brian? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think the thing that's really neat about this, and some of you heard the story, about eight or nine years ago, Ted Schaller asked the question, Dan, when do you think we'll be done with the twenty-seven miles?
Yeah.
Probably around twenty-twenty-two. Now, I don't know if he purposely worked toward that, but it's, it's funny that he said that about eight years ago, and here we are, twenty-twenty-two, and we're gonna be done with it.
And the only thing that I have not included, and I reserve, you know, I, I don't have any inclination to really press it, is Sawmill Creek itself. All right, Sawmill Creek itself is something that could be done for about four million dollars.
That, we've been taking that one down for a long time.
At this point, I have no intention of really introducing it because the benefits, bottom line is the benefits. It'll only give us a benefit of what's referred to as a ten-year rain event. A ten-year rain event can be categorized as a typical summer rain. So in that respect, you know, for four million dollars, we'll take opportunities and do some maintenance. That maintenance includes maybe cleaning out the mouths of the overpasses or underpasses, and put additional rip rock, rip ramp to stabilize the banks, in which case we've done quite a bit of them already, as either part of these projects or as independent maintenance projects.
Dan, the other thing is on these, as we do these ditch projects, we have old metal culverts all in these, correct?
Correct.
All right, and those, they got a lifespan, what, twenty, twenty-five years, maybe thirty?
They're probably more, back, uh, they were using different types of material, uh, some of them was, uh, it wasn't really galvanized, uh, and we've seen lots of stuff, just metal, steel.
Right.
Which has no consistency to be in the ground, number one.
Causes sinking when it does give out.
Right.
Yeah.
So, the culverts today, they're all galvanized, the water doesn't sit in them, the water travels through them, which is a great benefit, because if that water was to sit in them, especially during the winter time with the salt residue, um, you know, you would have that corrosion factor, you know, tripled. You don't see it anymore, plus the salt that we're currently using, and additives that we're using, um, just the savings in that alone, um, along with these biodegradable, um, solvents or additives we're using are really a plus too.
Yeah, and, again, I'm just piggybacking off of this, is, you know, we're talking culverts, what are fifteen inches maybe, is the average on some of these ditches, or?
Average is about twelve.
Okay, twelve inches?
Yeah, we don't use anything beyond eighteen without going into reinforced concrete pipe or, you know, our goal always is to use plastic and as long as we can.
Right, and again, we're, we're comparing apples to oranges, but remember when we had the nightmare on Walnut, you know, Avenue and the bridge collapsed? We had to shut that down for what, two years? How much, how long?
About a year, about a year and a half.
Year and a half, and we had to go through, not only we had to go get county approval, we had to get federal approval because it was on wetlands.
Army Corps, yeah, I think the Army Corps was involved in that one.
Correct.
You know, that's, speak of that, you know, we were ready to budget it for the following year, it's just, you know, we were just a little behind the eight ball, if you wanna call it behind the eight ball, one of these catastrophic, uh, rain events can, the damage you could do is unbelievable, picks up roads and up your, up these roads.
Brian, I know you've been patient.
Follow up on Eric's question, Dan, Eric had asked, you know, how this benefits residents, and I, if I heard you right, you were saying, you know, residents have puddling on their property, but I've seen you fix problems that are much more than residents have puddling.
Oh, it affects.
Yeah, if we go back to Gale Avenue, I remember, you know, it, it's more than puddling. The, these are areas that some residents have really had a lot of water because it had nowhere to go. So that, it, it really is significant, and I don't know if it was underplayed when you were describing, I wanna make sure everybody realizes.
No, you know, and then again, Brian, one of the key things that I left out is, you know, we had some great staff members that, you know, had retired, but when it first came on, the goal was to be able to see what our staff members could do. And, you know, we tried a couple of projects, we weren't very successful, but we found out where our towns are, and Pete Klineak, uh, who was a prior surveyor, you know, we had that asset, we used him to shoot every single ditch in the roadway. We gave him the parameters, so we got shock rays, then we looked at the shock rays, and we also looked at the backyards, and that's the real key, is looking at backyards to make sure that the water can flow from those backyards to the front.
Yeah.
Once we established that, then we were able to get the routes. So it was, you know, and, and maybe I am underplaying it, but there was a lot of science that went into it.
And he, and here's the other thing, one of the biggest benefits in, you guys reminded me about Gale, is one of the biggest issues with Gale was water went over onto the roadway, okay, so overflow. And you have that water sit there, it just eats the, you know, roadway. I mean, how many patch jobs did we do on Gale before we had to turn around and do it? Cause you gotta cut it out, redo it, and go from there, and it just, it eats away the road faster than it's possible, so.
Sunrise, Alabama, those were some key examples, we were out there on, we were in the middle of winter, we'd be busting out culverts because the homes, excuse, a couple of homes were getting ready to flood because the water had nowhere to go, and we had to, you know, basically bust out ice sweep culvers.
Now, is it your team gonna do, doing all these?
No, no.
So how does, how does that, how does that work?
Uh, we just, uh, released the contract, and I think, well, we already put it to city council for preliminary approval, but, uh, I don't want to.
There are different firms for each, or?
No, it's one firm, we did a total package, and one of, uh, let's see, one was an option, I forgot which one was an option, Crest Road was an option, and with the pricing as it came in, we decided to do them all to be completed with them.
But you oversee their work?
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, no, we have a designated liaison.
Okay.
Parkments, and his job is basically driving, hauling, checking with the vendor on measurements. Uh, and he'll carry measurements, quantities, HA George comes back to Chris, or reports to Chris, if it's something more complicated, I'll get more involved, but, uh, really, it's, it's a inventory process, and everything is documented.
Do you see any reason for any delays in these?
No, it's, it does, no, it's time.
Okay.
Prices are gonna keep going up.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, if I probably had a little more foresight, I probably would've pressed hard two, three years ago, for, you know, prior to COVID.
But you think you can get all these done this year?
Oh, yeah.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, Dan, again, they're coordinated with the roads.
Correct.
So that, I mean, that's how you schedule this?
That was right, but again, just from a pricing standpoint, it is a little more, but there's certain reasons I would've, if I had the foresight back then, then I'm gonna try and push a little harder to get them done then.
Any other questions on the stormwater ditch projects? Okay. Moving down to the next area, sidewalk replacements, forty-three eighty, in the amount of six hundred and thirty thousand. We've got the Claridale Hills Road safety sidewalk in this.
Now, we're at Claridale Hills Road.
And the seventy-ninth Street sidewalk.
Yes, you want me to explain, go ahead.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Claridale Hills Road sidewalk and seventy-ninth Street, we were in for a grant. Okay, so we could, there may be some offsets, we're not sure where to grant, if we're gonna be awarded or not, but again, these are neighborhood, um, collector sidewalks that basically link up with the schools, parks, so they're not just block sidewalks. They're considered neighborhood because they lead to, you know, key outlets for schools, so things like that, they just need a squad to clarify that.
And we did not budget revenue for the, for the project, so if, if the projects came in at these prices, that's what we have budgeted, there's no revenue included to offset. If we get that, it'd be.
So a grant would be gravy, but it would, yeah, it's not, you're not counting on something we don't know that we're for sure gonna get.
What we'd like to do is, Joe, if this does get approved, we have a current concrete, uh, program contract in place already, preliminarily, that's all been sent to city council already. So based on if this does get approval for a budget, we'll see what opportunities there are to negotiate with the existing contract, uh, because the only thing that's not here, in here, in our contract, is excavation for new. So that's the only caveat to it. But I know that concrete prices, I just heard it just gone up now again, we're locked in already, so that may be a good thing. So I haven't put a decision, nor have I spoken to Brian in respect to this either yet.
And Dan, like you have done in other years, this is approved for next year, but if the weather's nice, you'll get a jump.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we won't get this far ahead on this one.
Correct, but there'll be some expenses probably to this year in order to move the project along.
Correct, yeah, usually, you know, we're first kids out on the block to bid, and these vendors wanna start, you know, the work as soon as weather breaks, and typically, we'll probably spend a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand prior to May first, as part of the FYE twenty-three program, to get a jump on it and to be ahead for the road program at the same time.
No, I just wanna say, this is a huge benefit, at the location, at seventy-ninth Street and Stratford and Cass, you have two, three bus stops, and you have kids playing in people's yards, walking in the street all the time with strollers, so this is a great benefit, I'm glad you're, you're addressing it, so my full support on, on the sidewalks.
Plus the top, it curves, the street does, so it's very difficult to see kids that are on there, so.
That'd have one portion, yeah.
Yes, Tom Belzick?
Just a question, if, once the Claridale Hills sidewalks are done, or is that gonna allow us to revisit the crosswalk to the park? I know we've talked about it before, and in bad air, not being good areas to do that, and?
I've included this, there's some monies in here for this, so there's monies ready that are allocated as part of this project within that lineup.
Okay.
To do a crosswalk?
Do a crosswalk, right.
Great.
And the crosswalk needs to be decided, as something that's really, you know, we talked about Seventy-first Street, we talked about Maple.
What about on the street side?
Right, so, you know, I just, again, that's something to be seen at this point, and that's.
But it would be probably one or the other, right, because of the two closest streets, well, one's right across from the park, okay?
So we'll take a look, yeah, to see what opportunities there are.
Great, okay. Any other questions on sidewalks?
And the, and the sidewalk repair though, is that now citywide, so you guys go out and do evaluation of, of the, of the sidewalks, right?
Yes, sir, every year.
Okay, okay, good. There's a few in my area.
We designate one employee for a liaison that, you know, we don't have ten people looking at sidewalks, we have one person's way, it's consistent.
Yeah, good.
And we do a rating scale.
Okay.
Do you have a rating scale on sidewalks, the same way you do with the streets?
As far as?
As far as condition of needing work, right?
Yes. There's a little bit different, vertical mismatch, horizontal, spa, spalling, um, cracking, so mismatch, blah, blah, blah.
So if we come across some kind of sidewalk, and given, Dan, that we think is questionable, we just, he'll ask you where that sidewalk is and you're, and you're scaling? Or you just?
No, no, we don't have each, each sidewalk itself isn't catalogued like a street would be. You know, so li- literally, like, we, we go down the street, and if we find, when we're there on that day, if we find a problem, then that specific problem, when it rated, in order to be replaced or addressed, we document those ones. So, if, but if you guys, you know, come across them or resident complaints, you know, anywhere in the board, pass it along, we could definitely take a look at it.
Yeah, it's been working out very well, um, you know, we'll miss a couple, or some are debatable, residents will call us, we'll go look at it. For twenty-five dollars, you can slab fifty dollars, we replace it because it's not worth that mismatch, that's gonna only get worse within a year or two years.
Okay. Okay, well, we're gonna move on to crack and seal program? Any questions on that?
The one thing we're gonna do with the crack and seal is, Brian, I was having a discussion on it today, we're gonna move that over to MFT funds. At this point, I believe that it is an acceptable contract that we just, um, entered into, it's a joint purchase contract with, uh, Woodridge, and I believe the county as well, so there's several entities, and it was then under a uniform contract, so we're gonna take those funds and put them over into MFT.
Is this gonna be the first year we can do that with MFT?
Um, the answer is yes, because.
That's a great, that's great.
IDOT has a certain format.
Okay.
So far from what I've seen, IDOT should accept it, if they don't accept it, the worst case is that it gets, has to get transferred back into the general fund, and, you know, we're currently using other items, and then we'll look for additional items the following year to, you know, expense a little bit on that.
I mean, that, that'd be other, MFT, that'd be terrific, or it would be, so.
And Dan, that number that we originally had of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, that was the preliminary number?
Yes.
I think the new cost is two hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred?
Correct, and that's because of the bid documents that we got, we did this right before the bid, and then it went to, uh, it's already gone through processing with municipal services, so that just happened.
Okay, so it went from one ninety-eight?
To.
One, one hundred to two twenty-seven hundred?
Yeah, I rounded up a couple bucks to make it seventy.
Any more questions on that? Okay, we're gonna move down to capital improvements unless someone has a question on curb and gutter, okay? Capital improvements, four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, the majority of that being for the sixty-seventh street traffic signal. Do Brian or Dan wanna speak to that and the, the connection with Woolbrook?
Go ahead, Dan.
Obviously, sixty-seventh Street, Claridale Hills Road has been called plagued for vehicular accidents over the years, there's been really no rhyme, no reason to some of them, or why. The village of Woolbrook and the city of Darien have expressed concerns through their governmental bodies. Staff has been directed to take a look at various things over the years. Woolbrook, as well as Darien, has done what's referred to as geometrical reconfigurations of the draw, of the roadways, particularly sixty-seventh street. Darien has also since enhanced signage up and down Claridale's Road, um, solar stop sign, flashing stop signs also were installed on sixty-seventh street, you know, some years ago. And the most recent again, as I just referred to, was this flashing speed limit signs. One of the, the report is coming out, which will be coming to the municipal services, uh, committing Monday, is the recommendations of CLAUA. CLAUA is the traffic engineer. CLAUA did a preliminary study several year, I believe, two years, maybe three years ago, and the, uh, traffic signal did not meet warrants. Also, that the stop sign, a four-way stop sign did not meet warrants, but a stop sign, a four-way stop sign would not really be warranted for that section due to congestion, backup, stacking, so on and so forth. The consultant through this last round on his report stated that the traffic signal does not meet the warrants, so I'm gonna make sure that's clear first of all. While it does not meet the warrants, the city of Darien does have the opportunity to move forward with a traffic signal with no additional liability. In addition to, we have spoken to the village of Woolbrook. The village of Woolbrook is in up to a maximum of two hundred thousand dollars based on a four hundred thousand dollar traffic signal cost. If the traffic signal, there's also a caveat in there of two hundred thousand max, but based on twenty-five percent of total contribution. So in other words, if the traffic signal comes in at four hundred thousand, math is easy, um, it'll be two, wait, am I correct, four hundred thousand? Comes in at four hundred thousand, Woolbrook shares two hundred thousand, if it comes in at. If it comes in at three hundred thousand.
I thought it was twenty-five percent.
I thought you said twenty-five percent. So it'd be a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand.
Yeah, a hundred thousand. Right, so again, if it comes in at three hundred thousand, Willowbrook is only committed to twenty-five percent. If the project comes in at six hundred thousand, Willowbrook will pay up to that two hundred thousand in that case. So I just wanna make sure that caveat is.
So if it came at six hundred thousand, they're gonna get a, twenty-five percent, they're gonna give us a hundred and fifty. So as long as it's up to eight hundred thousand, we're, max, we're gonna give us two hundred.
Right, exactly. So I have math figured out for the percentages.
But do you think this thing's gonna go up to eight hundred thousand? I mean, we had such, okay, Bailey was.
Seven fifty.
Well, originally, if we were doing it under a federal grants or federal protocol.
Right.
The cost would have been close to seven fifty, eight hundred.
Okay.
Right now, the cost for the traffic signal itself are four hundred thousand is what has been estimated. In conjunction with that portion, there's also, we have four fifty for budget. I'm at four fifty for budget. We, the city, are gonna pick up the survey. We need to have the survey completed. The survey will be completed by Christopher Burke Engineering. Once the survey is done, then it goes, that survey report will go back to the traffic engineer, CLOA, who also will design, prepare for, prepare bid specs, so on and so forth for everything. The survey is critical to make sure that we don't, you know, especially for the alignment with the sidewalks, ADA sidewalks where pet signals are going, alignment, so on and so forth. The report also stated through CLOA that additional signage should be installed on Six, on Claridale Hills Road, basically with a team, with an intersection ahead, Sixty-Seventh Street. I believe those were the signs I just received today that you were looking at.
Yeah, I looked at them.
All right, so those, those signs are gonna be put up tomorrow. In addition to, CLOA also recommended tree removal. We have to do some additional tree removal, and so does the village of Willowbrook. Chris and the superintendent of Willowbrook have, were out there, they had evaluated and determined which tree should be removed. I still have to touch base with the resident for the Darien side. This will be on the north, excuse me, southeast corner. We have to take a couple of trees out on private property, which really are of little value, if any at all. So we're hoping that the resident doesn't have a problem with it. We don't foresee that. So that, that's pretty, pretty much in a nutshell what it's all about. So that's all coming, pending kind of approval. That's all coming to municipal services. Monday evening is the engineering agreement and the IGA agreement with Willowbrook, so.
That's great, yes.
Would it make sense, though, to do the additional signage and tree removal and see of what, how it impacts the accidents at that corner? Because how do I get comfortable that a light's gonna actually make the intersection safer? Based upon what this consultant is telling me, that may not be the case. So I'm gonna spend all this money and not have a safer intersection.
There's an enhancement, there's an enhancement to one point, you know, there's a couple accidents that had occurred that if a light was in place, should have prevented it. The trees, we're, we're enhancing the sideline is all we're doing on the east-westbound leg of Sixty-Seventh Street. Most of the accidents that have been occurring have been on Claridale Hills Road. And again, it's just, it's a variation of different types of accidents. But this is just another step for the trees to be removed so people can see further out. Whether or not it has any impact at all.
But isn't there, also, this is a budget meeting, not a, you know, goal setting. But isn't there also a possibility, though, and you and me have talked about this for forever, that you can increase accidents because if somebody blows a, blows a light or something else too, you're right? So just, you know, just because it's lights there, it doesn't mean that necessarily it's going to slow accidents. You might just have a different ki, you might just have a different kind of accident.
But nine ti, nine times out of ten, they will stop at a light regardless. Right now, we have nothing that's buffering the traffic from north and south that prevents anyone from stopping. East and west, we have stop signs. North and south, we don't. Also, you have two municipalities that, that agree. They're, they're willing to put up money and say, we agree, you know.
I'm just answering the question.
We agree, you know, so maybe you don't agree, Gustavson, but, you know, it's, we have a municipality that's willing to put up money and say, hey, let's fix this problem, you know.
And if I'm not mistaken, wasn't the police report on the last accident that the, you know, the woman didn't realize that there wasn't a stop sign north and south?
Correct.
That it was just, because she was going east and west?
There was a lot of, all these accidents, again, there's no rhyme or reason. It's a plague the way I look at it, you know, all the various accidents that have happened. There's no consistency. Last one, that where the gentleman, the person that was heading southbound, how he missed all those trees and got into that person's driveway, you know, and did a bunch of damage there. I couldn't tell you, couldn't tell you, no one can tell you. Is that an anomaly? Would have, would a stoplight distracted him to see it? I don't know.
And I.
There's no intoxication involved.
I would think if, if a light were to cause different or additional accidents, CLOA would tell us.
Correct.
I mean, I, I, yeah, we, we would definitely know that. You know, there, there are some times when there, there are configurations wrong and you have to do something. And as Dan said, this is just one more.
That was the first time I'd, I'd heard what Mary just said, and soon she said that about, lady thought, you know.
Yeah, that, that was the last one.
There is, don't get me wrong, there is a sign that says two-way stop sign. But a lot of times when you, it's a busy intersection, you expect it to be a four-way.
Right.
No, that makes sense.
So even though they've, I mean, I've caught myself speeding on that road because you are, you know, it is, the speed has been drastically reduced on that road. But I myself have.
Did you see the speed radar?
I, yeah, I have a heavy foot. Retired policeman, Jerry Pickley, would attest to that. I'm saying that on camera.
As Mary mentioned, we have put, put different ideas and money towards the intersection before. And sort of the light is sort of the last resort. And we've, we've improved the geometry, we've done many other things. And, and it just hasn't seemed to really reduce it as much as we'd like. We've had residents come in, and I think that was eye-opening for myself. If I lived in that intersection and a car accidentally ended up in my front yard, be a little worrying some. But, you know, it's always been troubled. We, the staff has addressed the best we can, and this is, you know, it is expensive, as you, as you mentioned, I'm a Gustavson. But I think, you know, every, every life that we can help save, prevent, or injure is well worth it. And if the city of Willowbrook is willing to put in some money as well, they see it as a concern for their residents, I think it's a, it's a, it's a win-win.
But we haven't put all the improvements in that the consultant is recommending. We're just doing those now, so we don't know what the impact of those are.
When you say improvements.
You said additional signage and tree removal.
The two signs are really just enhancement informational. There's nothing that's gonna, in my opinion, there's nothing that are gonna be blurring out and say, watch out, there's a big road ahead. Or, you know, the trees again.
I can tell you this, I live, I drive through that intersection every day. I don't think the tree is an obstacle to, you know, obscuring the view. I just, we, I just believe it's a dangerous intersection. And when it, when an accident does happen, all of our police officers converge in this area, where we're spending taxpayer dollars too, with releasing officers to this area every time there's a, every time there's a accident, so.
Ted?
I'm just gonna say this, that I hadn't really thought about this intersection a lot until you guys brought it up. But one of the things I've noticed, and I've seen this a couple times, because I, I come up Kingery, and I, instead of going all the way down to Plainfield and turn right, it gets backed up on that road, you know, with all, because only two lanes, basically. And of course, I'll, you know, turn off and go down there. But I will be behind some cars that will get up to that intersection because they don't wanna, you know, waste their time. And they're either gonna turn left or go straight, and they will just wanna basically do what they can to cut on out. I've seen a couple times since we brought this up where they brush themselves out to try and get on there because they wanna get home. So the point is, is that I'm looking at this and saying, at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if this could eliminate something that's gonna take care of some, you know, you know, accidents going forward, at four hundred and fifty grand, I, I think it's a good deal. I'll just, I'll leave it at that. Because Bailey Road, that light, when that went in, it was just an absolute, you know, we didn't have a lot of accidents there, but people were rushing to get through it, and that was a nightmare. But in this situation, people are just wanting to get home and rushing through it. You know, at four hundred and fifty thousand, I, I think it's, like I said, it's a good deal, so.
Brian?
Yeah, Dan, also, I, I believe this, you mentioned this to me, the light would have sensors. So if somebody's there at midnight, they're not sitting at a light for five minutes, like if, if they don't have timers. Plus, they'll be able to set the traffic patterns and things?
Correct, you know, modern technology has done lots of things. In this particular case, what the, what the traffic signals includes are the, what we refer to as the opticons. Opticons are something that preemptive, where the police, fire have the right to change the lights with their strobe equipment for access. That's number one. Number two is, and I'm not sure exactly how they're gonna be placed or where they're gonna be placed. They have what's like cameras, really. And what those cameras do, there's two types of sensors. The sensors in the ground, and there's cameras that are sensors also which say, okay, there's a car coming. It goes into this queue through the computer that's off to the side. And based on, if it's one car, there's no other cars coming north-south, it'll activate for a green, for a green ball. Depending on the traffic patterns, let's say five o'clock till nine o'clock in the morning, Claridale Hills Road is the busiest. It'll be programmed so that has the priority. And the people on Sixty-Seven, motorists on Sixty-Seventh Street eastbound or westbound may be waiting close to two minutes. So something of that nature. Sequencing has, has come a long way compared to where it used to be. So that flavor of it is also involved.
Okay, Tom Belzak.
Yeah, I've always been in favor of making the intersection safer, but to Joe and Eric's point, we don't know if this'll work. And I, I'm afraid of unintended consequences in traffic patterns. And this all happens when people are just going to work, coming home from work. If I'm waiting two minutes on Sixty-Seventh Street, does that mean people start cutting through Hensbrook? Does that mean people are cutting through Willowbrook? Does that mean now the people on the other streets have problems? Are we, are we pushing a problem from one spot to another? And I don't know the answer, but my question is, can, can we do some study on traffic patterns to see? I mean, potentially, it might improve it. It might make people stop taking Sixty-Seventh Street and speeding down it, which we have a problem with as it is. Maybe they'll decide to go somewhere else. But that somewhere else might be Sixty-Ninth Street or Seventy-First Street. And, and that's not solving the problem, it's pushing the problem somewhere else. So I, I don't have a problem with it, I just wanna make sure it's gonna actually benefit the neighborhood.
Yeah, Tom, I think that was one of the questions that was preliminary. I have to look for my email, but I think that was one of the questions I had preliminary reached out to the consultant in respect to the roundabouts and the traffic signal. What's the effect and cause if a signal is put up? And let me double-check the answer to that.
And, and I say that also because when Chief Thomas was here, he said he did not feel it was a particularly dangerous intersection. He doesn't know why, you know. It seems like when the accidents happened there, they were bad, probably because the cars were going too fast. But he didn't think the number of accidents at that intersection were much different than many other intersections.
With all due respect to the chief, I've spoken to officers who actually go out and attend these, go, go to these accidents. They, they agree that it's, it's a bad intersection.
I'm just talking about sheer numbers.
So it's subjective, you know, also, the worst thing we can do is do nothing, right? You know, it's, it's, I, I understand.
I'm not saying, I just don't wanna spend four hundred and fifty thousand to do something that doesn't work.
I think the value of life is more important than just a dollar figure, right? You know, so I, I think if we have Willowbrook onboard, which we did not in the beginning from, from, from what I've, from years ago, did not wanna put money towards this, they're now willing to do it. I think it's, it's, it's a no-brainer, you know, to some degree, you know, it's a no-brainer.
If CLOA tells me it works, I agree. But I want them to tell me it works.
But we have to, sometimes we have to go above and beyond what, you know, what their measures are. Like, maybe it doesn't meet their measurements, but what do we, we have to, we have to say, okay, what do we wanna do to protect our residents, right? You have bicyclists that go through that intersection, motorists, walkers. And, you know, one, one accident that happened there, a senior got hit by a car crossing the street. So what we have to do is control the ebbs and flow of traffic, that's all we're trying to do. Slow the traffic down, you know.
Again, I'm not saying it won't work, I just don't know, and I'd like a little more information. And I'm saying it again, because now is High Street gonna be the street everyone cuts off of Sixty-Seventh Street, turns down high and flies down high? Now, then what does that do? Then, then are we putting stop signs in everywhere on High Street? I mean, I, I, I get what you're saying, I get this could, this, people have gotten hurt at this intersection. That's not my point. My point is, if we're gonna spend four hundred thousand dollars, I want it to work.
We've already spent money on traffic, traffic studies. We spent some money on that already. So we're just chasing good money after bad, as Ted would say.
Good money for good.
So where do we go, I mean, we have a couple aldermen that.
We've done the studies.
Mary, can we take a, get a line, if you could, take a straw poll, because this item was gonna be put on the municipal services agenda. All three items, the IGA and the engineering for this.
The expense of that, you mean?
Right.
Okay.
And again, I don't have a problem doing more research on this. I just don't know if I wanna pull a trigger on actually putting in a stoplight until I'm confident that it's not, you know, I mean, we have accidents on Cass and Seventy-Fifth, there's a stoplight there. I mean, I'm just saying, I wanna make sure.
There will be more if there wasn't a light there, correct?
So what more research, we've had a stud, hold on a second. So we've had a study, and the study said, well, you said CLOA did.
CLOA did, CLOA told us through the reports that it did not meet what's referred to as warrants or a traffic count. Same time, it's up to the municipality, they wanna enhance safety features, that they have the right to do that.
Okay, so what other study could be done, though? The times, you know, what, what more could be done as a study?
I think what Tom is asking for, whether or not the traffic signal is gonna be a deterrent for motorists to be traveling through.
Other neighborhoods, other streets.
I believe I had looked into that already. That was at the time when a roundabout was suggested. So I have to pull up my emails, and I'll forward, I'll see where my emails are and see what the response was and forward it back to.
Well, you'll have that at the committee, because you're meeting.
Right, Monday.
But, but then, we got a problem here. He wants a straw poll, but, I mean, so do you wanna straw poll without us having, people have, knowing that or not?
It's, it's up to you guys, because I mean, you know, I don't wanna bring this up to municipal services if it's not gonna be somewhat approved, you know.
Well, I think, what I'm hearing is, majority of the council favors this. Tom has one question. I think if Dan goes to the committee and that question is answered, I don't, you know, I don't see a problem, Dan, with that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, yeah, it sounds like it's.
Well, just keep this in mind right now, your committee is, is the three people that are, that are looking, that's saying, hey, listen, I know it's an issue, I know it's a concern, if I know that the traffic light is the answer to it, and spending the money. But if you tell me that you're gonna put up some other kind of signage and cut down some trees, and that might, that might, you know, fix the problem? That's all I'm saying.
But the tree's not the priority.
But Dan, okay, just so, hold on a second, let's circle back. Going back to the sign and the trees, I think Dan already indicated that those are minor modifications.
I don't know that. The consultant threw those out there, so I don't, the consultant doesn't think they're minor, otherwise he wouldn't have said anything.
The consultant suggested it, what our, Dan Gombeck is saying is minor modifications, they're not gonna be a drastic.
The minimus in the grand scheme of spending money.
Okay, so I think the, the key factor here now is for you to go back and answer Tom Belzak's question and potentially Joe Kenny's question as it relates to the traffic pattern and are we moving traffic by putting in a signal?
I don't think no one will be able to answer Joe Kenny's question, will the traffic signals stop all the accidents? I, I don't know if anybody can answer.
It's like the.
No, okay, so, but Tom's looking for an answer, and you might have it in an email. Okay, so let's do the straw poll so that you kinda know where to proceed with municipal services. If, if anyone else is uncertain, like.
No, just to be clear, what are we, what's coming up on municipal services, exactly what's coming up?
The IGA with the village of Willowbrook, the village of Willowbrook is taking it.
Is it binding on us?
Is it binding on us? They're going to their village board March fourteenth, I believe.
I think there's an out in that agreement, right, Dan?
Sorry? Oh, there's an out, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of it, yeah, as long as we're not bound to it, where if something came up or I changed my mind and decided.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'm in favor of reaching out to them and, and working this out. I wanna, I want, I wanna know as much as I can about this.
Sure, sure, I understand.
I'm, I'm just not in favor of pulling the trigger at the second without more information.
I just wanna make sure if there was a majority that wasn't gonna be looking at this. I didn't wanna waste the committee's time in bringing it forward, so that was, that was my.
And what else is gonna be at the committee?
Uh, the IGA and the two traffic agree, the two, um, traffic agreements, or engineering agreements, which one is for the survey, and the other one is for the preparation of the, uh, bid documents and the design for the, uh, traffic signal.
So, there's expenses associated with that?
Yeah, yeah, that's, what are we talking about?
Uh, those are forty, thirty thousand, I believe, um, thirty to forty thousand.
So, the most we're on the hook for, the most we're on the hook for is four fifty, correct?
Yes, at this point, yes, I mean, like Chris said before, a truck goes up tomorrow, I can't.
But the point is, going back to Tom and Joe's situation, I know where they're going with this one.
Willowbrook's giving two hundred.
We have an out on an IGA, if they approve of the IGA and municipal services, that we go into, you know, an IGA with Willowbrook, and then all of a sudden it comes back, and we basically say, we don't pass it, prices go from four fifty to five million, we can get out of it.
Right.
And we're not gonna be affected, we're not on the, with anything with Willowbrook, that's what they're asking.
That's true, I just, yeah.
If they know that, I don't, I think, I know I'm not gonna talk how they would vote, but that makes sense.
Right.
And that's what Tom's looking for, but Tom also, I understand where he's coming from, he wants to know, are we getting, you know, what we get out of it?
Yes, sir, that's, that's a question we'll be able to answer.
So, I, I get that, I understand.
Dan, I'm sorry, is the out, though, if it's too expensive? It really didn't, I mean, we're both joining this agreement with the idea of doing it. The out is if it's too expensive, I believe.
It's too expensive, exactly.
But it's not, if we just change our minds, Tom, I don't think we get out of it. But I think if you do the straw poll, Mary, it'd be helpful to say, if, if, uh, did this, you know, majority of the council support it, um, as long as it doesn't have an impact on the neighborhood.
Question would sound, yeah.
So, I think.
Correct, okay.
And, and I guess the question is, do we have to make a decision this second? And, and, and maybe, maybe we don't do it on next Monday?
Right.
Could we call a special municipal services meeting after we get our answers in two weeks?
I don't think I wanna vote, I don't think I wanna vote on it until Willowbrook has formally committed to the dollars.
It's March fourteenth.
Well, it's, do the attorneys have, do the attorneys have ratified the IGA agreement, and it's on their village board?
It's not approved.
Well, they're allocating the money, that's why they're coming with the agreement.
But it's not approved, they can step away from it tomorrow.
But then we don't.
I, I, I want, I want something, a formal approval from them, that they are, are gonna spend the money.
We're the lead agency on this, so we're the ones who invited Willowbrook.
I understand that.
What does that do, Eric, I'm confused?
Well, because I wanna make sure that I'm not on a hook for the entire amount. If Willowbrook decides, after the fact, to say no, they step away, what if they vote it down? You don't know how they're.
But we haven't approved it either.
So, connect, that's my point, why not wait until they vote?
But, hold on a second, we haven't, but we're just discussing, nothing's been, nothing will be approved until April.
When we vote on the budget.
When we vote on the budget.
So, we can change things.
So, we can change things, we're only discussing, are we gonna move forward with the municipal services meeting? Or, like Tom says, we, we can't wait, because Willowbrook's talking about it on March fourteenth.
That's an easy question, that I could answer for Tom, I'm going through my emails. So, they'll, they'll be have a more educated decision by, by Monday for sure, so that's not a problem.
Okay, so, Tom, asking you, if you get that answer from.
If I, if I'm satisfied with the response I get, I'm in favor of this, I'm in favor of making it safer.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure it is making it safer.
Okay, and you need that answer from Dan, Eric? I need to answer, are you in favor of? No, Tom?
We, we've been working on this for twenty years, I mean, you could logically think that we could put a stoplight twenty years ago, it might have maybe even had more effect, but we've spent a lot of time improving, we've really done a lot of work, and I think this is the absolute final thing that we could really do to make the intersection safer. So, I think we've already gone through those steps, and we're at, um, the stoplight.
Yes, so you're a yes. Okay, and I'm, I'm a yes, as long as the, it doesn't impact or push traffic in other areas of that community.
But how are you gonna know that?
Well, I'll, I'm, I'm in favor of it moving forward with that information being provided to municipal services. But nothing's definitive tonight, Eric, it's just.
I understand that.
Joe Kenny?
I'm the same, I'm the same as Tom. I'm for, I'm for it, as long as we don't, as long as we don't cause any other problems.
But Joe, I cannot answer that question that you asked, if that light is gonna.
I don't want you to answer that, I don't want you to answer, it's fine.
Okay, it's about impacting traffic flow.
Impacting traffic flow through other neighborhoods.
Okay. Lester, you can answer, I think we know what it is? Yes, champion of the light. Okay, Ted Shower, okay, so, proceed.
That's fine, yeah, but it's just, I have.
And, and I, I personally appreciate it, since I won't be at municipal services, and, you know, if you could share that information with all of us.
Oh, I will, yeah, I'll bring, put it forward.
So that we know going into our meeting next week, we'll be revisiting this, but it'll be after municipal services.
I got a quick question, I know we're jumping down, and we're getting towards the end. Fifteen, one million, five hundred and ten thousand for approximately five miles. How much has that gone up since the last couple of years? I'm just trying to get a number.
Actually, it didn't go up that significantly, what did go up, bear with me one moment, is the plastics. And in this particular case, I was, I did a comparison on twenty twenty-one roads and asphalt, for example. In some cases, it was, well, there's different types of asphalt. First one is the leveling binder, the leveling binder for this year was up four and a half percent compared to last year. In respect to the binder cores, it's minus five percent.
Okay.
And also, the, uh, surface, which is the top cores, that's also five percent, minus five percent compared to last year. What did have a significant impact was, uh, the thermoplastics. Everything with plastics has gone up significantly, uh, and it went up from anywhere from twenty percent up to fifty-five percent, depending on which line item I'm looking at, just giving you one example, um, six-inch thermal pla, six-inch lines, those yellow lines you see on the railways or white lines. Last year, we were paying a buck thirty-one, uh, this year is a buck seventy-five. And then the other one is, uh, the twelve-inch from two sixty-two to three seventy-five, um.
Dan, I think I might be able to shortcut this.
Wow, okay, that is, we got some detail here.
Sorry, but it's past my bedtime.
I think you're losing us, Dan, you're losing us.
And you're making me go to sleep right here.
Dan, how much is a pound of butter?
I, I think this is what you were looking for, Ted. Last year was a million four oh four, this year, we're looking at a million five eighty-eight. But this year, we're doing about four point two miles versus five miles, it's about a twenty percent increase.
Okay, that's, that's.
I think that's what you were looking for.
The labor and everything.
Yeah, you're wel, you're welcome.
Thank you. It's good to have a CPA in the house, thank God.
And how much is the screw, nah.
Okay, thank you, treasure a coin, okay. Anything more on street construction rehab? Okay, consulting and professional, anything on that? Okay, anything more on capital projects fund budget? Okay, so, I will wrap that up for the evening, and, um, that will leave us next week, Tuesday, March first, at, uh, six thirty PM in council chambers, we will be going over the police department budget, the, um, water fund budget, and the water depreciation fund budget, yes.
In addition, uh, we are sending out two very small, the MFT budget and the special service area. Lisa will send that out, and we'll post it, I believe, tomorrow.
So, MFT and special services will be added to those?
Correct.
Special services area.
Okay. Okay, and, um, right, and then we look forward to hearing back from Dan on a couple items that we have, we're, we're gonna read. Gentlemen, can we have a quiet for a second, we'll wrap it, then we'll, um, we've got those items listed for you to revisit out of municipal services. And then we'll adjourn this meeting, um, of our first fiscal twenty-three, uh, meeting as a whole. Good night, everybody.